We are coming to you this evening from the Savage Center. We have all of our members here in attendance. We have just come back from an executive session. We had our call to order at 6:00 PM. So at this time, I'm going to ask everyone that is in attendance to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, so on our agenda, like I mentioned, our first item was the executive session. We did just have that in the other room. We are coming back from that executive session. So our first item on our open session section of the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes in our packet this evening, the December 18th open session minutes, as well as the December 18th executive session minutes. Does anyone have any questions or discussion on the minutes before we approve?
Motion to approve.
Moved by David, seconded by Teresa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that passes five to zero. Second item on the agenda is correspondence. Mr. Left, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the warrant report. So this week, I signed warrants in the amounts of $2,036,094.49, $1,898,741.97, $6,645.50, $13,086.46, $51,318.53, and $202,719.67 for a grand total of $5,886,882.79. Are there any questions on the warrant report this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is public comment. Reminder to the public that you can access public comment in two ways. In person at our meetings, you can sign up in advance through the superintendent's office by noon the day of the meeting to pre-register, or you can come to sign in at the meeting. You can also call the superintendent's office by noon the day of our meeting to register and receive a meeting link that would be accessible for the public comment section only. Mr. Left, did we get any preregistrations for public comment this evening?
We do not.
And does anyone here for public comment this evening? Seeing none, I will declare public comment close at 7:22 PM. Okay, moving right on to our next item. The agenda is a superintendent report. Mr. Left, take your way.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will just start quickly with the tech annual and quarterly reports. You have an annual report from tech within your -- at your table. There are also quarterly reports and this within your links today. There are no votes needed to be taken on this. I just wanted you to have it. Tech went through an audit, actually. Norwood was one of three towns that they reviewed, actually, minutes on over the past multiple years and found that we were one of the ones that did not have quarterly reports and annual reports reviewed. So I just wanted to make sure that all tech districts are doing this now, just to make sure that you have the annual reports in front of you for review.
They've reviewed their annual report. Maybe we just didn't have it specifically called out? Because it usually was part of the superintendent's report.
Superintendent's report, yeah.
Within the memo from Emily Parks, the executive director, it shares some of the audit findings where you can see that. I'm not sure if she specifically calls out us there, but they only took like three districts and almost nobody had exactly the way it was supposed to be anyway.
Okay, good. We're not the only ones.
Okay, so the next part I wanted to share with the committee, my entry finding themes so far. So I have not yet completed the report of entry findings that will be coming to you. I have gotten a significant amount of data from stakeholders throughout the community, throughout the schools, and many folks in this room. But I wanted to make sure that we started having conversations about the themes that I'm finding before I come with the findings themselves. The reason I want to do that is because it will drive a lot of the conversations that we have for budget, some of the changes that we're considering as we move forward. And I wanted you to be aware of the themes, the implications from those, as a driving force to things like the special education budget, some of the reorganization options, possible calendar changes, different options that are going to be considered tonight and in the future. So as a foundation for the discussions. And these are not decisions, all decisions, that we're going to have to make tonight, but they are items for consideration based on what the community stakeholders have been thinking so far. So with that, I'm going to open up a slide deck here of entry themes, and I'll just kind of walk through these. In every stakeholder interview that I've had, and in every data source that I have pulled from, the number one thing that comes up is the dedicated and passionate staff that are in this district. There is no question that of the commitment that our staff in Norwood provide to our students. There are questions about the support that they receive to do that, and you'll hear that in some of the themes as we move forward. But absolutely, I want you to know that I heard loud and clear from just about every single person, every single data source, that the staff are incredible in the district. So I just want to thank you to the staff that are watching. I really appreciate and am so happy to be part of that. And the community, right? I think staff and community. This is a really tight-knit community that loves its schools, loves its students, works with the town, and everyone works really hard to make sure that all kids have what they need and do an equal part to make sure that happens. So again, those were the cross throughout all the surveys and all the details, thoughts that were there. Dedicated, passionate staff in the community is incredible. With any entry findings and plans, come obviously themes for consideration and implications based on those themes. So I pulled some major themes out of the data, just to share with you tonight. The first one's around academic standards and curriculum. There's a strong desire to make sure that our academic standards are high enough to ensure that our students can achieve at high levels and have really, really high levels for future careers. There's also a lot of conversation that I found about the needs for what we call horizontal and vertical alignment throughout the curriculum, to make sure that, you know, what's happening in grade one or happening in grade three at one school is very similar in the other school, and the expertise at this, you know, this school over here is occurring at this school over here. The vertical alignment is to make sure our curriculum from, you know, all the way from pre-K all the way up to, I would say, our lead program is aligned, so the trains are kind of, you know, joined together and we're doing similar things and we're making sure that we're not missing a step along the way. So that was one of the things that came out. So implications there are things like, hey, we should really consider the developments of teacher leadership, right, and professional learning communities, and give the opportunities for teachers to use their expertise at their levels to share their expertise with other teachers, right, and to kind of drive what the professional development recommendation should be to the curriculum office to make sure that we're doing the best that we can for kids and teachers are prepared to be able to support kids in the best way. And obviously, you know, it's our teachers that would be supporting this under the auspices of what the strategic plan goal would be for instruction, right? So you set the strategic plan goals, then obviously the teachers figure out a way, how can we do this best for our kids? And so creating structures like that might be a really wonderful thing. I would also say that would be both for special education, ELL, all the different departments, fine arts, you name it, PLCs for those kind of things, just something to consider. Also looking at the different, how to support those PLCs, how we look at curriculum coordinators, how we look at department chairs, K to 12, or 5 to 12, or 6 to 12, or 6 to 8. We have department chairs all, you know, at different levels, and just kind of having conversations about the best way to implement the department chair and curriculum coordinator models throughout the district. There are many themes about the need for more student support staff, more reading specialists, more math interventionists, school counselors, big focus on behavioral challenges and providing mental health support to students. So for this, there are considerations of adding additional behavioral support staff that we have to take a look at. Training or incentives for paraprofessionals to make sure that they are qualified and not, you know, and they're incredible, they're incredible staff. Not all of them have training to be able to deal with some of our more difficult students. So we want to give them all the support that they can have to be the best paraprofessionals that they can be. District-wide intervention, interventionist specialists. Some more oversight around counseling and behavior and how we're doing that are all considerations that we should think about. Special ed administrative support, a lot of questions about the ability for our special ed administration to actually be on the ground at the school level. We have some incredible special ed administration now. They are stretched thin. They are not able to get to all of the schools and provide that support kind of on the go as needed. So we want to make sure that they're involved and able to do that. So this, you know, we would consider, and I'll bring to you in a little bit later tonight, a conversation around enhanced special ed support model that's more school-centered. Themes around equity and inclusion, just making sure there's true inclusion throughout the school system altogether. And here, I would just say that, you know, those vertical and horizontal structures that we're talking about is where those conversations happen. So when we're talking about inclusion, here are the best practices, here's how we make this spread across the district, both vertically and horizontally. Tiered system of support, just best practices in general are all things to think about. A need for more support staff and resources, right? Hiring and training teachers in structured literacy, providing adequate support to prevent staff burnout. Staff burnout is what I took from this room, where our staff are stressed, right? They're at a high level. So how can we create structures for them to be leaders, right, to feel like they're rejuvenated and ready to do, to come the next day and keep on working the way they do? Well, we can do that by saying we respect and value your expertise, and let's spread that everywhere. Looking at curriculum coordination and leadership, special leadership models, right, to take a look at those, to make sure people have the adequate supports at their levels to be able to do their jobs every day. There were significant concerns about safety and discipline, and I think you've heard this, concerns about bullying, concerns about violence, and the need for stricter consequences for disruptive behavior. So for that, you know, what are we doing as a district to look over safety and discipline, policy development, training, and compliance with those kind of things? Those are, you'll hear something later tonight, a question that I have for you to consider, where we can have that oversight and provide that. And this comes from staff, this comes from parents, this comes from you, right? We want to make sure that our kids are safe in school. Communication and community engagement, just a need for better communication between staff, parents, and students. Obviously, community is huge, but how do we connect that community to continue to make the messaging go out to support all students? And again, this is, you know, maybe a district-wide system or personnel to establish more cohesive communication procedures as we're moving forward. And maybe even branding, like what is our message, what is our brand as Norwood Public Infrastructure facilities came up a lot. Obviously, there's a lot of changes next year, moving to K through four model. There's a desire for improvement in school facilities, such as updating elementary buildings. So implications there are just the possible updating of some of the elementary buildings as we move forward. Those were the major themes, just for the public. There is still time to provide input for my entry plans, so if you take a picture of this QR code, if you're watching tonight, or watching later, it'll bring you to a thought exchange, which is a survey where you can answer these particular questions and write others' answers on, hey, maybe that's a really good idea, I think I like that. And you can rate that as well and enter your own data. This will be used as part of a report of my entry findings that comes to the school committee in February in more detail. So still time. I'll take questions about that before I go on to the next one if you want.
Any discussion? Fabulous. Okay.
So the next thing that I'm going to share is some ideas around reorganization based on, based on the themes that I just shared with you. The themes are real. We have a significant amount of stakeholders that provided that input. And so these are some reorganization options that, you know, in my purview, I can reorganize. Obviously, the school committee has the option, the budgetary requirements to kind of allow me to do some of the options that I'm considering, but also I want your support, right? I think we all need to be on the same page in how we go through this. So I have some ideas here, nothing that is really to vote on. Well, there is something to vote on tonight, but we'll get to that as we go. Let me share the ideas, and then we'll kind of go from there if that works. The first idea, you'll see, actually, in these options, you'll see special ed options to address the themes that involve special ed, the administration, and programming. You'll see some curriculum coordination options that addresses themes around the vertical alignment that we have been talking about, as well as opening new middle school. There have to be some changes here, because currently we have department chairs that are grades six through 12, and we are now having a grade five come to the middle school, so there'll be some considerations here. You'll see some options for professional learning communities and early release options to address some of these themes around vertical and horizontal alignment. I'm not asking you to change the calendar tonight. I'm not asking you to make a decision on early release days tonight. I'm asking you to just have a conversation about instruction tonight. You'll see some options around safety, compliance, and communications in a position that I'm going to put forth to you to be able to address the themes that you have shared, that the community has shared, that the staff have shared around safety and student discipline. And there's a lot of moving parts with early release options, so again, there's a lot of conversations there. So I'll start with a special coordination model. You heard the theme regarding the on-the-ground support. So in this particular case, I would reorganize to have a pre-K. This is a similar model to, as it is now, a pre-K principal with a part-time team chair there. The elementary would have what we call two special education coordinators, and that should say two team chairs, just so you know. I'll share what these responsibilities are in just a minute. The middle school would have a special education coordinator and a team chair. The high school would have a special education coordinator and a team chair. Currently, we have a department chair at the high school, a team chair, department chair at the high school, and the middle school, working six to grade 12. We have an out-of-district coordinator, assistant director. We have an in-district assistant director, and we have a director of student services. This model would add these pieces to the mix to give that direct support, and we can do this utilizing current district staffing. So I'm not asking for additional funding for this model. It's a change that we can make internally. These particular coordinators would, under the supervision of the director, at their selected levels, right? If you are a special ed coordinator for the elementary, you would be working with three elementary schools, right? If you're the other special ed coordinator at the elementary, you'd be working with the other three elementary schools. Middle school would cover middle school, high school would cover high school. They'd be responsible for all programming and delivery of services within those levels. They would use their expertise to work with the principal and the staff, to consultation, direct with them, training, supervision, evaluation, and provide that direct support to those particular staff members and the principals, to allow the principals then to become the instructional leaders that can be in their buildings and support some of the other initiatives that we have, we were talking about. They'd be responsible for parental caregiver communications. Right now, they are stretched, the assistant director, the director are very stretched, trying to deal with some of these very legitimate and significant concerns. And if these folks are there and on the ground and know the schools, know the programs, they can support better development of those programs. I will share with you that we have a special ed audit that you, is currently in play. The results and recommendations from that audit will be coming at the end of May. That process has started already. There are interviews that are going on. I do not believe that this is something that can wait for that audit to come through. That audit, I will guarantee, just based on my entry plans, the process so far, will show that there needs to be more support closer to the school levels. This model will get us there. It will also allow, when those recommendations come in, to give the new structure, the new coordinators, the new director that's coming in, a blueprint for how to implement the recommendations from that report. Otherwise, we'll spend next year trying to figure out how to recreate this model, and by the time we get the people in place, we'll then have to do the other recommendations, the more, I think, legitimate, real recommendations in programming and service delivery in the following year. So this allows us to really take the, I guess, the playbook and go with it and really start us off, and really make the money that we spent for that mean a lot more in the long run. And it supports the current themes that we're hearing from the community and the stakeholders. The next slides that I'm going to show you are a couple of different considerations of models that we're considering for curriculum coordination. The first model, and these are not yet in stone at all, but I have met with all of the department chairs, we've met with multiple staff members, I've been in conversations with the teachers' union, obviously, just to have these conversations, really trying in partnership to develop different ideas that work and support folks. This particular first model would create two curriculum coordinators for pre-K through four, one in STEM, which would cover science and math, one for humanities, which would cover ELA and social studies. They would really be focused on working with the assistant superintendent and the principals at those levels, and the teachers at those levels, to ensure that we have a viable curriculum in those areas, that staff have the appropriate training they need in those areas, and they may, they may work on some evaluations of staff in those areas as well. The middle school, my recommendation would be to have department chairs five through eight for math, science, social studies, and EI. There are currently, as I shared with you before, department chairs that are six to 12 covering those areas, as well as six to 12 covering world language, guidance, wellness, and fine arts. This would shift those math, the current math, science, social, and ELA department chairs to nine to 12, and it would add four new department chairs for math, science, social, and ELA at the middle school level. This would require some additional release time for the contract, but it would allow very specific support to the middle school teachers in the curriculum and supervision at the middle school, and support to those teachers. The world language, guidance, wellness, and fine arts, my recommendation would be to keep them, to make them five, grades five through 12. There's fewer teachers to supervise in those roles. They support that. I will share that the conversations I had with the department chairs were really enlightening because they all thought and wanted something a little bit different in this case, right? I mean, some were really passionate about ensuring that the curriculum area that they were holding is really looked at and considered, even K through 12, to make sure that the curriculum options were there. And so not everyone will love this, but I think they'll understand why I'm recommending it this way. And my idea really is, you know, in a perfect world, we have K through 12 math, K through 12 social, all those kind of things, but those are not viable options right now. But these are options where we can take these folks, they would meet regularly with the assistant superintendent of academics, and talk about vertical alignment of curriculum. And that is, that is the really important thing about this particular model, and I believe very supportive of the staff as we, as we move forward and transition into a new middle school model. The other options that were considered were options around, that would not require the additional 1.6 or 0.4 release time for the department chairs. One was having a pre-K through eight STEM curriculum coordinator, one was having a pre-K through eight humanities coordinator, while the department chairs, again, shifted the same way from nine to 12 and five to 12. Again, this would allow for vertical alignment. The curriculum coordinators for STEM and humanities would have a larger role, obviously, would not be able to complete the supervision and evaluation in the way, I think, that we could at the elementary, with the other model, but it is an option that doesn't require the additional 1.6 release. And the final model that we considered was a pre-K through four curriculum coordinator, a five to eight curriculum coordinator, and the same shifts for the department chairs that I've been discussing in the previous model. Again, this would allow for a vertical alignment, and in some cases, a horizontal, but it would be, they would be responsible to get out there and work with every single teacher to figure out that horizontal alignment, and that doesn't really work all that well. What I would love to see, and this is my dream, the next slide is my dream, is the teacher leadership PLC side. Professional learning communities, again, are when teachers are, work together, utilize their expertise to develop recommendations and provide professional developments through that expertise, share their islands of excellence, I think, from school to school, level to level, and really become teacher leaders in driving district initiatives. It works because, you know, one teacher that may have never met the other one, for whatever reason, never get to work together, gets to really share those good ideas. We can't do things in silos, it allows that to happen, and I think it gives the teachers a certain amount of energy to be able to know that they're leading the charge and creates somewhat of a leadership pipeline as well within the district. But in that particular case, the elementary would have, we call these PLC leaders for kindergarten, PLC leaders for first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade. They would work across district essentially, so they would facilitate district-wide professional development across the first grade or across the second grade. So what you're getting at Balch is the same thing that you're getting at Prescott, is the same thing that you're getting at Callahan and so on. And they would work with one another to really, to enhance their knowledge, their skill sets. And if you really want to talk about educational outcomes with all the academics, with special education, you're creating these models where teachers are regularly getting that PD from one another, right, to really work through that and recommending what we should do. So that would be, we would add, actually, stipendary positions for those leaders. Now, this one takes time. We can't say we're going to have PLC leaders and then say, you have no time to do this work. So one of the things that you'll be hearing tonight, and Dr. Munoz will talk about the calendar, again, not something that we have to vote on tonight, it's for consideration, but there are options that I'd liked us to consider over time that would allow to put these PLC leadership roles in place. And so that's a conversation that we're going to have as an administrative team with principals, with staff, to figure out how to do that. But it's just a really, it's something that we wanted to share and have that conversation with you tonight, and we'll do that. And that's why the conversation around the calendar will go the way it is tonight. I am later on going to present to you a job description for a Director of Safety, Compliance, and Communication with fresh eyes on the district, you know, and all of the entry findings that I had, including data from you and from the community. I truly believe that this Director of Safety, Compliance, and Communication is an important position to put into place. I, you know, looking at the leadership structure in the office, I think it was really hard to know what was needed last year at this time, really hard to know what positions might have benefited the district. And I, now getting all the community input, seeing all the players, having the conversations, it's clear to me that this is a recommendation that I would like you to consider regardless of what happens in the budget process tonight. This particular position would lead envision around student, staff, and safety. You heard from the themes that I shared tonight, that safety is a question for our students, safety is a question for our staff, and this position would help with crisis management, would be that communication person in times of crisis, would work on policy development and implementation throughout the district. So when we talk about safety, when we talk about communication, when we talk about policy, how do we then say, how are we going to get that and disseminate that to staff to make sure they have what they need to implement those things? So this position would do that, would focus on some of the legal compliance pieces, and public relations, and brand us, right, to hit the communication side that we're talking about. Bullying, investigations, reports, training for staff. It's such a variety of things that are really important, that are just coming up to the top of the tier when we're talking about the themes. So I would, we're remiss not to ask you for this this evening, and to have a vote on the job description later, with the idea that we would post this for next year, and then we would shift the budget around if we had to, to make sure that we can get this position in play. So there are timelines pieces here, so I, my goal is to have a special ed coordinator model similar to what I shared this, a little while ago in '25-'26, and a curriculum coordinator model for '25-'26. Still going to play around with the curriculum coordinator piece a little bit in terms of what we do K through eight or K through four. I would need, I think, the support of the committee for department chairs at the middle school to determine whether I go K through eight curriculum coordinator or K through four curriculum coordinator and department chair at the middle school. Obviously, there are these preferences that I have for stipendary positions for the, for the early release options, you'll hear about later. There are questions around after-school care for working parents, right? We have many families in this community who have two parents who both work, and so the addition of any kind of extra days, extra early release days, will impact them. So this conversation has to revolve around what can we do to support those families so they don't have to come home from work early and, you know, deal with job-related things? There are some ideas out there that we're considering where we can work with that. It just might make some, take some time to actually figure that out. Transportation runs, do we have an additional late bus run if we do additional early release days? PLC stipends, what does that cost? And how about training teachers to make sure they're implementing and facilitating PLCs in a way that really makes it work? School schedule times, right, to ensure that adequate School schedule times, right, to ensure that adequate travel, feeding time, prep time is considered, right, when we're trying to get these district staff together at one building under release. I will say, you know, the department chair implementation at the middle school for '25-'26, again, will certainly give us at least a vertical alignment for this year, and I will continue to ask about PLC leadership as we can. So with that, that's the end of the ideas that I have, so I will take questions on this.
There's one thing I was thinking about for the clarification of the public. We've, the ideas here, the key word is reorganization. So as we were talking about the suggested positions, we're not add, what we heard about weren't added, and new people or additional FTEs necessarily, with some exception in some of them, minimal. So I just wanted to clarify that we're not talking about reinventing the wheel necessarily, just reallocating of resources to better meet the needs.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? In the budget that we saw last night, the, everything that you've presented in here is, we're not looking to add to that budget with this. It's a little bit different than a reorg because we haven't approved that budget yet, but you're not talking about adding on to.
Correct. So the reason that I am sharing this as a reorg is because this is something that I would consider internally to reorg the administrative structures. It does have some budget implications. Mr. Mannion will talk about the updated preliminary budget as it is now, which is still at 8.1%, which includes the pieces that I just shared with you today, or options for you, so we can do that.
This is a discussion of, a more in-depth discussion of how that 8.1% would be utilized.
Absolutely.
I know it's coming, but.
Yeah, no, it's a question. Ten more questions. So when, in both option one and option two, we have for wellness and art, visual arts, you cover both the grades five through 12 in different, in that whole contingency. What happens in K through four in both art and wellness?
So we have a, we have Jeff Carter, who is our director of art, of fine arts, who covers the K through six, K through five right now, or K through five right now. He would continue to do K through four in those cases. Wellness is a struggle.
Yeah.
There's no question. In a perfect world, you have a director of wellness that's K through 12, pre-K through 12. We have many teachers, right, at those levels. That is something that I would support over time, it's not something that's here. I did talk to Ryan about that, this possibility. But that would be, you know, we would still have some pretty good teacher support there at the elementary level, that worked with JJ as well. So it's a struggle, but especially when we're talking about new health curriculum, right, over time. So there's nothing in there right now to change that.
Okay.
But it is a concern.
Okay, okay. And then for guidance, can you just remind me, adjustment counselors, they fall under guidance or they fall under special education?
Adjustment counselors are special, special education.
Okay.
Guidance is going to pick up an additional guidance counselor at fifth grade.
Yep.
So we're speaking with her, she was very open in wanting to be five through 12 and just having an additional guidance counselor.
Okay. I don't want the community to think that we are not vetting and asking questions, just as so much of it was covered in executive session, it can only be covered in executive session at this time, so the lack of discussion right now is actually not representative of the hour plus that we spent in executive session, and I just want to make that clear because it might appear that, oh, we're not really asking questions or digging in, but we actually did in executive session.
And they were, because it involves contracts.
Because it involves contracts and strategies for potential negotiations or impact bargaining.
Great, and some of the following presentations will create an even more robust story.
It's a timeline today.
Yes.
That is it for my superintendent's report, I'm sure.
Great. Any other discussion before we move on to the next, but next item, which is budget? Great, all right, so our next agenda item is budget. We've got several items under this one. We'll start with the budget subcommittee update.
Yeah, I'll keep it pretty brief. So as a subcommittee, Amory, Mr. Luff, Mr. Mannion, and myself met on Monday, Ms. Semino and Ms. Berger joined us, as well as Dr. Munoz. We were in that meeting for almost three hours and covered in quite deep detail what you're going to hear from Mr. Mannion and our guests. We will be meeting again as a subcommittee on next Wednesday, the 22nd, from two to four to continue the budget work. We are going to Budget Balancing Committee next Thursday at seven. We have not met with EDC since October, so we don't have an update on that process yet, but we will at our next meeting. And because we anticipate there will be some direction and/or requests coming out of EDC, we will meet again as a subcommittee on Monday, the 27th, at noon. So I'll just ask the committee to have some patience with us again. You will get some budget information in your packet later in the day, that Monday or Tuesday, because really, in this budget time, we are always working down to the wire of every school committee meeting, but we have three meetings in between now and then. So that's just the process of where we are in terms of all the details. I will hand that over to Mr. Mannion and Mr. Luff.
Thank you. So.
Before we do that, can I just ask, where is that meeting? Is it here?
EDC, it's in the Town Hall in the finance commission room. And it's hybrid as well, if you wanted to join remotely, say that.
Okay. Okay. So this is a precursor to Mr. Mannion, we'll take this in a minute. We know that we presented you with a budget of 8.1%. We still have preliminary budget, 8.1% over the current FY25 budget. We also presented you with some positions that were desired, that we thought were necessary, and that were not in that budget. Mr. Mannion kind of worked through, along with cost center managers, to reduce some other parts of the budget that were there, to be able to take those positions and put them in the 8.1%. So this 8.1% now includes funds for the Director of Safety, Compliance, and Communications that I referred to. It includes funds for two behavioral interventionists. These are general-led behavioral interventionists that, again, at the desire of staff, parents, talking about behavior, are two positions that we were able to place in this budget. It also includes a position for the freshman academy staff member that will assist in the implementation of the excellent work at the high school in terms of welcoming our freshmen into the, into the high school, that Dr. Galligan's been working on. It also includes some funds for some of the curriculum work and stipends that we had shared with you already this evening, should we decide to take some of those routes, as well as some salary market adjustments within the organization that I shared. With that, I'm going to give it to Mr. Mannion to talk about the preliminary budget, and as just as an aside, the kind of way we'll structure this is, Mr. Mannion will do the preliminary budget, and then we're doing cost central reviews. It's new to the, I think, the community and everyone, so we'll do the cost center review for personnel and transportation, which Mr. Mannion will do. Ms. Bergeos and Ms. Semino are here to do the cost center reviews for student services, special education, ELL. At our next school committee meeting, we'll be doing cost central reviews for academics, curriculum, and Mr. Kibb will be here as well for technology. So sort of kick that off that way. Okay, Mr. Mannion?
Okay, thank you.
Let me just.
So you have a memo here, as Superintendent Luff explained, we're basically building off the preliminary budget that you saw in December with an 8.1% increase, and we're putting forth some proposed changes to that budget that implement some strategic improvements to the district. The increases that we're proposing equal roughly $595,000, and then we've found some efficiencies and some things that we decreased in the budget that amount to the same amount. So the budget stays at the same, same dollar amount, the adds equal the minuses, and there is an increase in FTEs because we are putting more of the funds of the 8.1% into staff. So you can see, the additions are 2.0 elementary behaviors interventionists, one teacher for the freshman academy, and the Director of Safety, Compliance, and Communications. We have an amount in here for the K through 12 curriculum coordination. It covers, it's an amount that covers the scenarios you saw, that you just saw Mr. Luff explain, and this may go up or down depending on what the final, final version of all of that is, but this covers those various different proposals. And then lastly, we're adding $75,000 for market adjustments that are needed for non-union staff that we're going to be requesting. On the other side, we've been discussing the Medicaid fund, so what we're doing now in the budget is we're moving to special educator salaries from the operating budget to Medicaid funding. We're also putting forth a warrant article to give us sort of a one-year lead on that. This isn't reducing any headcount or staff, but we're just reducing the budget on the operating budget by two. We also went through all of our textbooks and instructional materials. We know that there's been a historic, an amount of $350,000 in for curriculum refreshes, and we've kept that amount in. $350,000, we know there's going to be an English refresh next year that's going to be started, but we found that we also had a little bit more than that in, and we also had some other amounts that we had put in the first request, but we had more than enough, so we were able to take down some of the textbooks and instructional materials. We're still keeping $350,000 for the English language arts refresh. We looked through all the salary budgets, we went through all of our, that's the largest piece of the budget, we went through all the contracts, all the amounts that were in there, and we found that we had some areas that we could reduce a little bit based on our preliminary efforts, when I went through with the assistant business manager, Gina Meng, and specifically also in the PERS, we're still adding funds so that we can increase the steps for some pairs and some of the programs, but we found that we had a little bit more than we needed, so we're able to reduce by $130,000 there. We looked through all of the contracted services. Again, we had gone with the proposals put forth by all the principals, we found about $42,000 that we could take out of contracted services. We had some of the cartwheel services count in two different budgets, in one area and in another, so we were able to reduce there. And lastly, we had a lot of requests for equipment, furniture, and repair from the principals, we are taking down some of those requests now. So of all the ups and downs, they net out to zero. On the operating budget, it's an increase of two FTEs.
Yeah, can you go back to reduce district-wide textbooks and instructional materials? You're going to need to drill down a little bit more. $250,000 is a lot of money.
Okay. So we had, we had, we had $350,000 in a district-wide textbook account that was going to cover the English language arts.
Correct.
We had also had a request from the English department for another $250,000, so we found that those were redundant, so we took out that. We also had an amount of $100,000 that was for math, but it was for the next year after that, so we said we really don't need to start it as soon as next year. And then there were a few areas within science where we buy some consumables that we found we hadn't put in. So we went some, there were some ups and downs, but we're still covering everything that we need. I can share a chart or table on it, if the committee wants to see it, I can prepare that.
I would like to see that. I'm very hesitant to cut any money that is district textbooks and instructional materials. Pre-over, I, I'm just, I'm still going to always be gun-shy that we're going to end up in a situation where we don't have the money for curriculum, instruction, and those types of things.
If I may, I'm sure. And this was, as we did the work, the preliminary budget, this was a double-budgeted item. So it was something that was not necessarily in last year's budget, so that is why you see it reduced from this second round, as we went through, we identified.
And that happy double-budgeting accident, you're sure that we have no other need for instructional material in this district?
Well, we went through cost centers, reviews with all of the principals and all of the directors and everyone, and so based on what they have requested, we noted from them that these were a double request. So that's how that got in, there was two different budgets that it got into, that's why we were able to reduce it, so.
When we were running through the COVID years, we skipped a couple of curriculum refreshes, didn't we? Because we had to buy, like, PPE?
No, we didn't, no.
There was one year, because I remember fighting about it.
That we skipped.
When was the latest, I think the other way that I can answer this question is, do we have, when, when we get an additional, the additional information, JJ, could we also get a list of when the curriculum was refreshed?
Mm-hmm.
Last for every major area, for every major grade level?
Yeah.
That, that would help me feel more comfortable with the double budgeting, but I just find it hard to believe that, that, to me, that's a happy budgeting accident, right? Like, we've got more money than we thought we did for instructional supplies, great, let's go buy some.
That's a big happy budgeting accident.
It's a huge happy budgeting.
For me, when I go to the cost centers or somebody says, hey, we need 350 for ELA, and then somebody else says, hey, we need that money for ELA, and they, I would be remiss to say, we should have it in, you know what I mean? So I just want to be careful with it.
It does sound like ELA wanted, they did their request not, not accounting for the fact that we already had the 350 for the.
I can't imagine that ELA is the only person with their hand out asking for more money for curriculum.
There's other curriculum pieces in there, each school has certain, certain supplies in there too, that kind of thing.
Yeah, and like I said, we noticed some things in science that we hadn't added, so we increased a few lines. I can also, you know, we can do the table, but we can also, the whole preliminary budget in the expanded budget form, we can put these changes into that and give you the whole expanded budget as well.
Can I clarify? This is why I like the spreadsheet. So we're talking about the 2400s, right?
Yes.
Okay. So Joan, I had Sean print out for me what we saw digitally last time.
I don't have the right glasses for something.
No, no, I'm going to, I'm going to help explain it because I understand your concern and I wanted to find where it is. So it's in the 2400 area, and then the first line is school textbooks, district-wide, FY26, 35, $350,000, right?
Yes.
The line right below that is school textbooks, ELA, 25, $250,000.
Exactly.
And what you're saying is that the request for ELA got put in both of those lines, but it should have gone in only one. So Sean, if I'm understanding you, you were able to take out that 250 because it was already embedded in the line before, in 350.
Yes.
Right? And then if you go further down, three-fourths of the way down on the spreadsheet for math, there's $100,179. That last meeting, when I had asked about the curriculum refresh, because it was mentioned on the slides, both ELA and math, and I said, hey, math isn't up until FY27. So this is actually an FY27 cost, not FY26, so you took that out.
Exactly.
Right?
I understand that, I understand what you're saying, that these are clerical things. I think about the budget the way I think about my house. If I put, you know, two paychecks, if I got an extra paycheck one month, right, and I had planned to use one of those paychecks to fix my roof, right, and I found that I had another paycheck, great, now I can fix my stairs too, right? There's always something to be fixed.
Oh, no.
There's always, there's always, and so I view instructional materials and supplies in that way, and that we're never, you're never, I have yet to hear in any school committee meeting that we are like 100% where we want to be with instructional supplies and textbooks and curriculum, which is why I'm saying, okay, great, I understand that there was a budget, not, not an error, but like a, you know, you caught in this, how many lines are there? Like thousands of lines, you caught that there was a double entry request. Great, fantastic.
Right.
Let's use it for something else.
Well, right, but I'm still, but we are, right, so Joan, like.
Yeah, but, yeah, I don't, kind of, we're using it for like, we're not using it for, so anyway, we're not, so the bottom line is, is I want to see the table and I would like to see the curriculum refresh things rather than keep talking about it. I can look at those two things, submit my questions, and we're not voting on the budget right now anyway, that's just coming up as a flag for me.
Yeah, no, I completely understand your question. I just want to make sure the community understands that this is not like an actual reduction. We're still in the process of the budget of working through the numbers and the lines and potential errors that happens in any budgeting process.
Yeah.
Because the spreadsheet we have goes back to FY23 actual, and the $250,000 under the ELA line, that wasn't supposed to be there. Just to give you some context, for FY25, what we're currently in, we only budgeted $10,400. The year before, nothing, the year before, nothing. So had I had this on paper before and gone through all the lines, I would have asked at the last meeting, whoa, what's going on here? Why did we go up by 2,300%? But it was an error. So he's just fixing the error and he's just helping us understand transparently how we're still in that 8.1% and getting in that top couple of rows, and where the change is. where the change is not, it's really not a reduction. I understand your questions. I agree we should have a graph and a table. I just want the community to understand we are not actually reducing it. It was just an error in the spreadsheet. Is that accurate?
Take the happy error.
Yeah, that's why we call it preliminary.
Right. And if I misspoke, correct me.
Any other questions on that? Move on to the next.
Just with the double contracted services, the cartwheel, I, I think I know where that error was without even looking. It was because it was carried over in the high school line and in the district line.
It's usually, we, we budgeted in the nursing line and, and the high school wanted to make sure we didn't miss it, so.
Yeah.
Again, this was a preliminary budget in December, so all of these subtractions you see here, none of them are real reductions at this point.
Right.
They're just, we're refining our budget.
Yeah.
And finding that there's strategic things we want to add, and if we can refine the budget on some other ends, we can add things that are truly strategic that are the district.
Because in May, when we talked about carrying cartwheel, because it was, it was partially covered by S R funding a year ago, and it originally was just at the high school. Lori, if I speak incorrectly, tell me. So it was carried in the high school budget, but then last year when we decided we were expanding it to the whole district, Matt Wells at the time kept it under the high school so we wouldn't lose it, but we flagged it in the spring that it would be moved out of the high school into the district, and it just got carried over twice, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mannion, not yet.
Okay, so this is, we're going to be, we're going to be doing a lot of these. This is personnel. This presentation mirrors what you saw for the preliminary budget presentation. I'll go through it a little quicker, but it's really focusing on personnel. So here on the first page, you can see where we were when we had the original preliminary budget from December with an increase of nine point six FTEs and four point nine million dollar increase, eight point one percent. And now you can see the updated one with two more FTEs per the table you just saw. So we're at an increase of eleven point six FTEs, the same dollar increase and the same percent increase. This was a summary that we showed in December, so you can see the very top-level drivers of the budget, the base salaries, which includes all the collective bargaining, the steps, the column transfers, the colas, three point eight percent. Transportation is a, is a large area of increase next year because we're raising our rates for our in-house, and we're also going out for a contract, for a new three-year contract, one point five percent. And then we had all the additions, which, all the staffing additions in December were for the middle school, nine point six. That all added up to a six point five percent increase. All the other increases, tuition, supplies, curriculum, professional development, one point six percent, and we arrived at the eight point one percent. Can we go to the next chart?
Mr. Mannion?
Yeah.
What was the, what was the rate of inflation over the past year?
The rate of inflation, I think it's been about four percent.
So well above the one point.
I think it's, yes.
That we're budgeting.
Yes.
All right, thanks.
We'll have to.
Just to be clear.
Just to be very clear.
But, but the largest part of that, not other expense areas, tuitions, and that's a great story right now. You know, that area drives a lot of it, as does transportation. So I think if a few areas end up being lower than inflation, it can make the whole number much less.
Yeah.
We could dig into that more. This is the updated chart, so you can see there's a new line in for net additional staffing, so those are the two that you saw, plus some of the ups and downs in the staffing area that comes to eleven point six. So that's point four percent of the eight point one, and then all other increases down below is now one point two percent instead of one point six because we lowered some of the curriculum, we lowered some of the equipment repair, et cetera, and we're still at the eight point one percent. This is just one. We had some feedback that just, we'd like to do a, one slide that just talks about that base salary increases. So we're not getting into the detailed detail on it, but these are some of the cost drivers that drive our base salaries. We're not adding, aside from adding FTEs or doing anything strategic, just taking forward what we have. So when you look at the base salary drivers, and this is based on Unit A, you have step increases. So staff are eligible for a step increase up until a certain point in time. The average step increase for Unit A is approximately four point five percent. And then when you look at the staff, fifty-six percent of the employees are on the very maximum step, so they're not eligible for that step increase. But the, the staff on that top step make the greater portion since their salaries are higher, so even though it's fifty-six percent of employees, it's actually sixty-three percent of the total salaries. So sixty-three percent is not really eligible for that four point five percent step increase. And then you have column lane transfers when educators are able to go from bachelor's to master's or master's to master's plus fifteen, and we've budgeted two hundred thousand dollars for that. We'll see in, by February, we should know the exact amount of that. And then you have the overall cost of living increase for the contract, which is negotiated next year at three point two five percent, and then other increases, which might be stipends, reimbursements, et cetera. Those are the drivers that go into that base salaries, which on the previous charts was, was three point eight percent of our budget increase. This shows the breakdown by function. The only difference is here, instead of being at a nine point six percent in the two thousands, which is the instructional area, we're now adding one up in district-wide leadership, plus we're also adding those market adjustments. And then we're also adding the two point oh net on, on the other line, well, one point oh increase on the other line, net. The overall increase is still eleven point six FTE, so we're up two FTEs from earlier. The rest of the slides all show in red the things that have changed. I, I won't go through it, but it's there for this committee if you want to look through this PowerPoint. It essentially shows what was shown in the December presentation, and then now you also have in red things that we've added. So for instance, in the one thousands, we've added the director of safety compliance, we've added the market adjustments. We go to the two thousands, you can see the behavior interventionist, you can see the freshman academy. We're moving two positions to the Medicaid funding, we're adding the curriculum funding, we're lowering textbooks and instructional materials. And that shows the revised totals. Nothing has changed with the three thousands. Four thousands, we lowered some of our equipment repair. Five thousands, no change. Six thousands, no change. Nine thousands, no change.
Thank you for those slides because I was hunting them down.
It's a nice tally of where we're at right now. All right.
I have no questions.
Okay.
I have no questions.
Okay.
I'll be this.
All right.
Transportation.
Mm-hmm. Let's move right along then. All right, so we'll move on to our, oh, I lost my agenda amongst all the tabs. So we'll move into the next Mr. Mannion show is cost center reviews, personnel and transportation.
All right, this is a presentation on transportation, and I have to say that Valerie Bishop, who works in the transportation office, she did the lion's share of this presentation. So the objective of this is to show a comprehensive view of the transportation department, including analysis of numbers, budgets, and key challenges. This is an overview of what the district does. So in the special education realm, we're transporting students in district who are, who have IEPs with transportation in their IEPs, out of district, and then we're also doing McKinny Vento as well as foster care transportation. We do that all mostly with our in-house transportation, although we do supplement with contractors. We have our thirteen right now yellow school buses. Next year it will be fifteen because we're adding two buses for the new middle school. We also, within those buses, do transport to the private school, St. Catherine's, one of those buses. We also cover field trips. We cover vans for the league. We cover summer camps. We cover other things. And having the in-house transportation really gives us a lot of flexibility that other districts don't have. So I think that's, that's a, something to pat, pat our backs on. This is a overview of what we have. You can see the growth in the, both the number of students at, for special education transportation as well as the number of vans. You can see that back in FY twenty-one, we had a hundred and thirty-seven students and twenty-one vans, four buses, and right last year, it peaked with three hundred and eleven students, thirty-nine vans, and seven mini buses. We're slightly under those figures this year, but they're increasing. The figures are increasing from September to January, they've increased. We're currently at two hundred and ninety-five students, so we haven't hit the amount that we reached at the end of last year. We're still basically at capacity, and you can see our projected budget increase going from three point three to four point two million. It's a large increase next year. Transportation is definitely one of the larger cost drivers in the expense areas, and we're moving from thirteen buses to fifteen.
Just maybe I have a quick question.
Yeah.
So around the number of vans that we have, obviously we have it in our operating budget to do, you know, our van replacements. It doesn't seem like we're replacing, are we replacing vans or do we just keep adding?
No, it's in the capital plan. So we replace three vans every year, and we, we just put through Fall Town meeting five of our minibuses. So actually, you'll see, you'll see a, you'll see one of the slides on that.
Yeah, I know those are going to get replaced.
Yes, we do. We, we have an order for two of the vans, and we've ordered the five minibuses already this year. We're hoping to order one more van this year.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it is part of capital, but I know the vans, like, they're technically part of our operating, capital piece of our operating budget because we're going to order them each year.
Yeah.
I was just curious because like, especially from twenty-seven to thirty-nine, where I know we, we had a year where we needed to get a lot more vans. We were talking about getting the minivans in because we couldn't get any of the, the white vans because Amazon was buying all the white vans. And so we were, we, it was, that was a horrible year.
Yeah.
But we did go from twenty-seven to thirty-nine, so I'm wondering in that timeframe if there, we actually retired the ones that needed to go?
It looks to me.
Or if we're still kind of in this where we.
It looks to me we had two hundred and one students that year, three hundred and eleven students transported, right?
Oh, it was massive. It was a massive increase.
So you could imagine that the vans are still being used to the extent that they can be, be used to transport those kids.
And that, that's been the story. You'll see the slide when we get to the minibuses, that we, we have a certain number and then we replace it, but we keep one, or we have a spare, but now it's in use, you know?
That's kind of where I'm curious, and I just wanted to, I just want to make sure, of course, that from our budgeting perspective, that Mr. Bishop has what he needs to get these vans repaired and all that fun stuff because they are constantly in motion. There are no spares, so they are being used incessantly.
That is true, and it's a good point. This is just a line graph showing the increase in the number of students, similar to the, to the chart we just saw. And another graphic, sort of a, a large graphic to show the difference between the out-of-district versus the in-district transportation. Of course, we transport more students in district, but the out-of-district transportation could be going to very faraway places, and sometimes we do have to supplement our in-house with contractors on the out-of-district. These are some of the current challenges, so the special education transportation, it keeps increasing. We're basically at capacity everywhere. We're, we're at capacity on our yellow buses and we're at capacity on our, on our special education vans. The benefit of doing it in-house is that we can supplement the yellow buses with the vans and minibuses when we need to, which we are doing this year, but we are definitely at capacity. Like, if we get more students, even here, if there's a lot of increases later in the year, especially the yellow buses, you can see the enrollment patterns have changed this year, and we've seen a huge influx of students needing the yellow bus transportation in Windsor Gardens. Those buses are completely full. If we have any more students coming, we may need to seriously consider adding one of the two buses for the rest of the school year. We're hoping that we don't have to do that, but we're just literally at capacity everywhere with transportation.
We'll keep her a close eye, and we will come to you if we have to do that.
Another challenge is with, with the in-house, we have to, we have to hire drivers and monitors, and we're finding a lot of competition there. So in next year's budget, we're, we are increasing our rates. We need to increase our rates to attract more drivers to the district. It's really difficult when you get into the winter and there's a lot of sickness and people are out, and we have to cover.
Whatever drivers or time.
We need to, you know, we did, we have a survey that we did of surrounding districts, and we, we need to increase our rates to be competitive. We are, and then of course, next year, we're moving fifth graders to Coakley. And the year after, of course, we're going to have some elementary changes.
But just to be clear, there won't be additional buses required for that year after because...
No additional buses for the year after. Because of the way the routes are, the elementary will gain the benefit already next year, so even having the two buses for the middle school next year will help alleviate some of these issues at the elementary schools because we'll have those to use. This is a, a great slide that shows some of the benefits of doing the in-house transportation. And what we did was we said, if we have sixty-seven students right now going out of district, if half of those we had to outsource, the cost of that at four hundred dollars a day would be close to two point four million dollars. So that's just like a rough estimate of what we're saving by doing in-house transportation. This is our minibus timeline, so you can see the minibus program went back to two thousand nine. They need to be replaced about every eight years, so in two thousand seventeen, we replaced the original five. We had a spare. In two thousand twenty-one, that spare was put in use. In two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, we had, one bus was totaled. We added two more. We're now at seven in use, and in Fall Town meeting, we just ordered that original five for the second time because the last time they were purchased was two thousand seventeen. So basically at capacity, but we are continuing the replacement schedule. And then this is just the overall budget for transportation. So you can see transportation office staffing, we have two, we have the budget for two full-time staff. We are, we do have an opening, and you'll be hearing about a job description later. We also have a part-time office staff that's built into that. We have our in-house drivers and monitors. You can see we're, we're not only increasing the rate there, but we're finding that even this year, when you see our quarter two presentation, that we're spending more than we budgeted, so we need to increase that amount. So that's why the percent there is forty-three percent. We are increasing our regular bus contract as well as adding two buses, so that's all in that increase of thirty-six percent. Additionally, as I mentioned, we do have to outsource some of our special education transportation. We see a lot of that this year because we're at this sort of limit, so we need to keep an amount there for our vendors. We are saving a little bit there, hoping to attract more drivers. McKinny Vento, this is net of credits, because we do get a lot of credits from McKinny Vento, but we are seeing a huge demand for McKinny Vento. Many homeless students both coming to Norwood and that we have to share with other districts going to other places, so we are increasing there. And I should say, in the in-house drivers and monitors, there is a credit there for circuit breaker as well, so it's net of the credit. Then we have gasoline, repair and maintenance. There's a small amount in the budget for innovation pathways. We're, we're adjusting that slightly. We have cell phones for the drivers and all other expenses. So some total, the whole area is going up by eight hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars and a budget increase of twenty-seven percent. This is, I would expect this is what you see with transportation, is a large increase every three to five years, depending on that yellow bus contract. If eventually we can work to a five-year schedule, it will be more consistent increases in the years after, but transportation tends to be an area that every three or so years you see a large increase. I, here, maybe it's been different with the growth, but that's what next year's shaping up to be.
Sean, what is this twenty-seven percent equal in, as part of that eight point one percent budget? Because I think that's going to be something that's going to come up.
That was, that was, that was there.
It's in there, right? I just don't remember.
One point five percent of the total, eight point one.
So I think this is just something we want to keep in the back of our minds when we go to BBC, that I equate this to trash, you know, increases that this, there's nothing we can do about this. This is, you know, the bus contract is going to go up and we have to increase it, so like, there are certain portions of our ask that are unavoidable, almost like when we have the, the tuition increases. And I just want to make sure we're framing that well when we, when we go to bat for So like, there are certain portions of our ask that are unavoidable, almost like when we have the tuition increases. And I just want to make sure we're framing that well when we, when we go to bat for our, you know, eight point one percent or as much of it as we can muster.
Good point.
Yeah.
I have a question about the, when you said we might have to add another bus this year. And I would love to know how well we're enforcing the, the current policy of you need to have paid your fee if you're in seventh grade or above.
I think we're enforcing more than we have in the past because of the challenges this year. I know that our transportation office has been in touch with, throughout the fall, with the middle school like almost every day, making sure that everyone who rides indeed registered. Because even if you're getting transported for free, you're still supposed to register. We saw a lot in the beginning of the year, people who were just getting on, because every year, they never registered. And that's gonna take, changing the culture. I think next year with the new middle school opening, our goal is to have that registration really front and center in the spring. Like, you're not gonna have transportation if you don't register. Even if you're over two miles and you're in fifth grade, it's no cost, but you've gotta get out and register. We want everybody to have, because they can only plan those routes early. Once September hits, the routes are planned and then we're scrambling.
So I appreciate the incremental nature of culture change, except if we're talking about adding another bus, which is a couple hundred thousand dollars mid-year. And I guess I'm telling you that as recently as last week, I know that that enforcement hasn't been a hundred percent. So if we're gonna get to the point where we're gonna have to add, add an entire bus mid-year, we are probably gonna come at you asking for a close to a hundred percent enforcement of that registration and making sure that kids who are supposed to be on the bus are on the bus.
Yeah. And we can baton down, I mean, we did a lot of that in the fall, but we can do it again here, especially, I mean, I know they're, they're watching it like- Every day, especially at Windsor Gardens. The cost would probably be, I think it's about eighty thousand for a bus, but we are only at about three-fifths of the year. So some amount less than that. And again, we're just trying to make it through. We could make it through if we can. If, if there's ten more registrations in, in, in that certain area, we might not be able to make it through.
Certainly, I agree, we should take an extra look, just to make sure that kids, their families have paid their registration fees.
And like I said, you know, it, I understand culture change happens incrementally and I understand that there's been a push. The only, the only time I get really cranky about it is if we're talking about having to-
Of course.
Expend extra money. My other question is, maybe not one that you can answer. I believe that one of the promises for the incoming administration was to eliminate the DOE on day one. Is that correct?
You're talking at the federal level.
I am talking at the federal level, because I'm talking about McKinny Vento. And I'm talking about what do we know how that ends? I mean, I really enjoy the fact that everything's happening during budget season, because it just makes it nice and easy to plan, uncertainty. But I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, does, will that potentially impact our budget if laws change? Because they're federal laws versus state laws.
The answer is anything could impact our budget, right? So obviously, if the DOE goes and there, there's money there, so the money doesn't necessarily go away. It becomes a block grant that's given to the state and the states figure out how to disseminate, distribute that. I don't know what that would look like, what the state would do there. There's potential for reductions in title, there's potential reductions in McKinny Vento. But there's also potential that they all stay. So I, I wouldn't want to worry ourselves with that yet. I think we still need to create a budget that's, you know, derives what we need to do for kids. And then if that comes to fruition, for whatever reason, then we'll take a look at it there.
So what you're saying is that regardless of what happens on day one, the expectation is, is that, that doesn't wipe out current appropriations, current requirements, those types of things right, immediately?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep. Congress herself has a vote to reduce those funds.
Right, so it's under, it's under congressional appropriation rather than executive order?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sean, in our bus contract, it's four hundred and thirty dollars a day per bus. So I think that would be about like thirty-nine thousand, if we needed to add one. Does that sound about right?
Four hundred, yeah, because we're probably at about, almost at the midway point-
Yeah, times the nine ninety.
Like ninety-two days. So that seems about right.
Yeah, so it'd be thirty-nine thousand to add to us.
More than a pair.
Four zero, if we can do.
Four zero. I'd like to prepare people, when there's gonna be hills I'm gonna die on, that the hill's coming.
No, no, and I wanna, I wanna point out too, that I appreciate the work that Valerie's done to get a lot of these things digitized, because compliance is a lot easier from your computer, especially in this day and age. And so I know a couple of years ago, we really, you know, Al really tried to enforce registration much earlier in the year and it pretty much freaked everybody out, but that's what's necessary to get those routes down. And people still didn't register until literally the day before school started or the week after. And so it really put a stress and a strain on the routes. Certain buses, I know my son was taking the Coakley bus at that time and it was like, all of a sudden, there was just like kids standing in the middle and sitting on laps. And thankfully, we had two buses in our area. I said, no, you're going to the other one and I'm calling off the transportation office right now that you're switching buses. It's half-empty, literally across the street. And it was just because of, you know, the compliance. It has gotten better. And I think that, you know, digital, electronic registrations can only help. But, I mean, I think we do need to have some sort of a, you know, cold-hearted stance on this at some point. And, you know, your registrations are due by, and unless you move into the district, like, I don't know if they're, where the, where the cutoff is. And obviously, there's implications for special education versus, you know, and so I totally understand that, but people are gonna take advantage. They will forever. So I, I don't know where that lies and if that's something on the radar, but, yeah. And as a person who's chronically late with signing up for literally everything, I would be one of those people that would be SOL. But, yeah.
I think next year with the two additional buses at the middle school, we're hoping that a lot of the capacity issues are solved. Getting people to sign up earlier is just something we have to continue to do, because to even utilize those buses, we need to get the registrations early so we can properly plan the routes. I think with the new middle school opening, our plan is to really try to push that as early as possible and, and encourage everyone, look, this is a new middle school opening, you really need to register.
Yeah, that, I think that was the first year of Parent Square too, and it just wasn't as apparent that these were out there. I think just like a media blitz in all languages on Parent Square to all, you know, district-wide would really be helpful.
All right, so that brings us, I think that was it for you? Yes, okay, perfect. So that brings us to our next agenda item. Ms. Mino and Ms. Boujoir are here to talk to us about call center reviews for the student services. For joining us and waiting so very patiently.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Committee, Dr. Love, Dr. Minus, and Mr. Mannion. I'm Lisa Boujoir, I'm the Director of the English Language Education Department for Norwood Public Schools. We're gonna start, I'm gonna actually just watch the slides, because it's easier. So we are here to just talk about what our driving costs, drivers are for our department moving forward. And we'll talk a lot about our growth that we've experienced over the last five to six years with our multilingual population. Currently, as of yesterday, we are at seventeen point three percent representation of the entire district, including preschool, all the way up to grade twelve. Our current population does represent a majority of Level One and Level Two, early language developing students, so about fifty-five percent. And just to remind you all and the public that we do have required direct instruction that is instructed to us from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So if a student is at that Level One or Level Two of foundational skills of developing English, they are required to have at least two to three periods a day. You know, somewhere around that ninety-minute of direct instruction a day. And then Level Three and Four, as they're transitioning through their English language development, of at least forty-five minutes daily. On this slide, just to talk again about not just the growth in our population, but we've talked a lot at Cabinet, as well as at our administrative team meetings, about net enrollment change. So just this year, we are at plus sixty-one through today. So that'll just, it just tells the story of how we are adjusting. While we are having students withdraw or graduate, we are still consistently adding more students that are arriving to our community. I will say, the high, part of the high number in January was that we just recently identified twenty-one students from the LMPA. So our kindergarten ELE teachers, Ms. Brunner and Ms. Lucan, were over there in December identifying those students. And that is a requirement from the state, that we have to identify those students. We do not have to provide them direct instruction, but it's so that we're aware of kind of the students coming to us. The real big ask for fiscal year twenty-six is to add an additional ELE teacher at the middle school, not only to address the additional grade that will be there, but looking at today's data and looking at our current enrollment numbers of our fourth through seventh graders, this would be our rising, our students for next year. If they all stayed at the same levels, if we didn't have any fails, we'd have a hundred and eighty-nine students, along with the a hundred and twenty-three former English learners. So those are students that have reached a certain score on the access, which is our annual assessment that we give to our students to determine their progress in English language development. And once they get exited out of the program, we still are required to monitor them for four years. So that is an additional responsibility that all our teachers have in the department. We also want to be thoughtful about that significant rise, so that additional request is there and it allows us to maintain an effective program for our students.
Ms. Boujoir, I can ask you a quick question?
Of course.
Because I looked through, and I just want to, for, for the public reminder, can you remind us how many languages we are talking about here? Approximately?
We are, our population of students who are identified is well over forty languages. But the district as a whole, it's closer to sixty or seventy. So it's not necessarily, I, I, it's wonderful if someone speaks another language, but our job is to teach English. So it just brings a beautiful diversity and culture to our community. But we have students who, we have plenty of families that are raising their, their students bilingually that aren't qualified or in our program, for example. It's just that they're exposed to multiple languages at home. And so we just, again, we celebrate that with them.
I, I only bring that up because I do feel like, and, and I'm guilty of this as anybody else, that when you hear English language learners, you tend to, you know, revert to probably two or three major. And I just want to make that clear to the, you know, general public, that we're not just talking about two or three major populations, we're talking about forty different languages at the middle school.
Easily, easily. And while we do have languages that are, there are majorities, right? So Spanish is still the majority, Portuguese, and then Haitian Creole and Arabic, those are our top four languages. But again, that is representative of not just our students who are multilingual learners, that is representative of the whole community.
Sixty different languages that are at homeschool.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Good question. So again, this is just kind of the supporting data to just break it down with what I expressed in the previous slide of our students that are, as of today, who we have in each grade level across the district. So as we think about the transition to next year. I just wanted to express also just the continuing initiative of Elevations, which for our budget is a good part of it. Elevations is a platform that we brought into the district two years ago. We're in our second year utilizing it. And it really just supports our initiatives to make sure that we are in compliance as required by certain OLA, which is Office of English Language Acquisition through DESI, so that we are providing student support plans for students who need that, very similar to an educational plan. And also allows us to have a more streamlined approach to the management of our data and be able to have my teachers go to an evaluation meeting or a conversation about student or student support services or child study teams or SST, that, you know, we're bringing all the information to the table, so we're, we're thinking of the whole child. This is our growth over the last six years. So this is data from DESI, from our student profile reports. It is the annual growth at the exact same snapshot of time from our October reports. And so you'll see that all the way up until our most recent submission of five hundred and ninety-four students in October. And since then, as of two days ago, we were at six hundred and twenty-two. And so, again, keep in mind that it's not just our multilingual students that are receiving instruction, but we are also monitoring two hundred and eighty, two hundred and eight students across the district who have, are now in a monitoring state. The majority of those kids are at the middle school level, because when we look at English language development, the language development continuum is anywhere between five to seven years. So if we have a student who's been with us since their early, you know, early childhood, school years, kindergarten, first grade, it's very typical for us to expect them to start exiting programming by those upper elementary, middle school years. And this is just an additional visual to really just show you the growth. So just in the last five years, we're close to two hundred additional students, but a growth of about five percent since two thousand and nineteen. And just the budget landscape there, and Mr. Mannion can talk about that a little bit.
This is the, it's a very rolled-up budget for the ELE department. There's no changes, this is still what we presented in December. You can see the, there's an increase of one FTE. The budget includes the ELE administration, the director. And we also added this year point three of an administrative assistant position to support this. And then there currently are twenty-three ELE teachers and we're increasing by one for the middle school, which we presented back in December. And as far as all other expenses, some are going up and down, but the, the bulk of the other increases are in the translations, which we're increasing by twenty thousand. We're still seeing a lot of demand. Even this year, we're probably over the budget of sixty thousand that we have. And that's an overview.
Take questions on the, on the ELE one first, where you're at.
Not a question, but just a request for at some point in this process. Lisa, you have shared with us in past years, how much of your budget comes outside of the operating budget?
Oh, yes.
And I still think that's a very important story that we need to tell. So I know tonight is not the time for that. But there is a lot in your department that is funded through title money and other grants. And you provide tremendous resources and services that is not covered at the budget that we get at town meeting.
Yes, absolutely. We can do that with you, Chair, for sure. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yes, moving on, special education.
Good evening. It's so nice to actually be at the table with Lisa, because so much of our work overlaps each other. So it's just exciting to be talking about student services globally. So I just wanted to provide an overview of the major drivers influencing our FY twenty-six budget asks. The four major drivers we're gonna talk about tonight are special education enrollment, our welcoming and integrating new students, out-of-district placements, and then initiatives for enhancing our program quality. So as I have shared with you many times, we continue to see an upward trend in our eligibility numbers. We are currently at a position where one in four of our students is eligible for special education. And I am happy, I wanted to put this offer out there, we are more than happy to take any of you on a tour of the programs to actually see our amazing staff in operation every day. So this data is coming from our SIMS report, report number seven. I know there's, we want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples. So all this data came from that report. A second. So I broke this down, our eligibility down by three to five and six to twenty-two, which is how we report to the state regarding eligibility. You'll see, we have a consistent pattern with our early childhood. Looking at, we start the year at a significantly lower number than we end the year, and that's a reflection of students turning three throughout the school year. Ages six to twenty-one, we're seeing the same trend. I just want to highlight that we ended last year lower than the previous two years. So, you know, we continue to monitor where our eligibility rates are. Excuse me. So our second major driver is welcoming and integrating our new students who register in Norwood. So this year, we've had fifty-one new registrations of students with IEPs prior to coming to us. Twenty of those students are currently being supported in our in-district programs. And I call out there the Paxton Leap, because as everyone knows, those are more intensive programs and that is where the majority of these students have landed. Three students have joined us this year with dedicated one-to-one pair of professionals who have come from other Massachusetts towns. So we are required to meet that service level until such time that we can actually evaluate the students ourselves. And subsequent to the- And subsequent to the opening of school this year, we have had seventeen students join us. I will tell you anecdotally, since the eighth of January, we have had one student enroll who's already out of district, and we've had another student enroll who will be going into our PACS program. So it is a constant flux of students coming. Just in comparison, we did have sixty-four students withdraw over, from last school year to this school year. Ten of those students were in specialized programs, so that is a net gain of ten students this year. And we have had zero students leave who had dedicated ones. Oh, and I just want to mention, the students who have left were in the PLC task in LEAP, so we are not losing PACS students. So, out-of-district placements? As we all know, the out-of-district placements are a significant cost center for the Norwood Public Schools, and while they're essential for students whom we can't meet their needs in district, this absolutely represents a substantial final, financial investment. So we, I broke down for you what age level the students are whom are out of district. Elementary does also cover preschool in this situation, and you'll see the seventeen post-secondary, I will address that in further slides. We do have eleven students who are on our watch list. There are many factors that can place a student on our watch list, but those are students that we are in the works of potentially having to place out of district. So, we did a pretty deep dive into the elements that are impacting students needing to go out of district, and so there are five factors right now that are driving it. The first being an increased need for alternative placements. You've heard me say many times the impact of chapter two twenty-two, students who are disciplined and need to have an alternative educational placement in order to continue to make progress towards their graduation. We continue to see a rise of that. Another thing that has really come to light for us is the complexity of student profiles. Previously, we would see a child who was either on autism spectrum or had mental health issues. We are seeing a significant increase in the comorbidity of those two disabilities. And so the intensity of the students that we have in front of us now is significantly more involved. The third, our significant behavioral challenges, as you heard Mr. Luft talk about earlier with running the behavioral interventionist, we are seeing an escalating number of incidents, and this includes gen ed, special ed, and our program. So inclusion students, program students, and general education students that we are having to support.
Can I interrupt you and just make that plug? I want to thank you for highlighting that, because again, alternative placements with discipline and then the significant behavioral challenges, I cannot stress this enough, that what the state legislature chose to do in two thousand and twenty-two is not only significantly limit professionals and professionals' judgment and the tools that we use to be able, and I'm speaking from my own experience, because that's my job, you know, with that, but you, you put others at risk. So why we have to outplace some of these kids, and I have been in some of these situations, is because of, and it can be both special ed or regular ed, that we are, we are not allowed to give consequences, and you, you are seeing that as a direct result of that. We're not talking about that enough, so I want to thank you. Let's keep going.
Sure. So, and the impact of that, right, is that we are creating challenging learning environments, as well as we've seen an increase in staff injury over the last year. Number four is having comparable eighteen to twenty-two-year-old programming, so really looking at enhancing our lead program. As I saw, we saw on a previous slide, there are seventeen students currently out of district within the age of eighteen to twenty-two. We would love to be able to bring some of those students back, but we definitely need to make some investments into our lead program in order to be able to do that. I will tell you that the vast majority of those seventeen were students who were out of district and then just transitioned to eighteen to twenty-two out of district, but that's a nat, that's, that eighteen to twenty-two is a natural time to bring kids back and be able to program for them in district.
And in their community, then.
Right, absolutely. They need to learn travel training, they need to learn, you know, who's at the post office, they need to learn who's at the food store, like those sort of things with, in their community of where they're going to be living in the future.
Just, how many kids are in district for lead right now?
Uh, four.
Okay.
Yep. We had five, and one student chose to take on full employment, so we are at four right now. And the fifth area is really around language-based learning, and I specifically highlight the middle and high school. Our need for more intensive reading services around language-based at the middle and high school has become extremely evident. So again, our need to enhance our programming. To date, we have had ten students go out for extended evaluations. I will remind you all that an extended evaluation is an eight-week period where they do intensive evaluations in a much smaller, more clinical setting. Six of those ten students who have gone into extended evaluations have needed to stay there due to the level of clinical intervention that can be provided that we can't provide in district. And out-of-district support, at some level, in some way, we have had fourteen students need that. One way we attempt to mitigate this and the need for out-of-district is our in-district programming, and I just want to pause and thank school committee for transferring the twenty-five thousand dollars, so that we can make program improvements now in the current school year, so thank you. So our current enrollment in specialized programs is two hundred and thirty-one students, that's a lot. That's twenty-five percent of our total eligible students, sixteen percent of the total district enrollment. And I've highlighted this for you many times over the last five years, but our autism-related programming is booming, and we have a hundred and twenty-five students currently who are accessing specialized programming due to autism-related needs, which ends up being fifty-four percent of our students who are in substantially separate classrooms. And I call that out, because students with this profile tend to need a significantly higher student-to-staff ratio, as well as a different methodology to learning. So a lot of intensive resources devoted to those programs.
Marley, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
We talked a lot last year about not only like the intensity of our specialized programs, but also the intensity of the students, as you mentioned, going out of district, and it was becoming harder to even find the proper out-of-district placement, so that continued this year.
Absolutely. So I always like explain it to parents as it's like applying to college, right? Once the decision has been made that we are going to seek a placement, we then have to send packets, they interview the student, they interview the family, they typically go and visit. What used to be about a month's process now can unfortunately take like up to three months.
It's a really long time.
Yeah. Once you've decided like their needs are greater.
Yeah. And, and just for the community, and we've clarified this before, but when you are talking about determining eligibility, the school district is not diagnosing children. We are based off of the diagnoses of mental health providers, physicians, then determining their eligibility within our programs, but we are not diagnosing children.
So we are not medically diagnosing children, but we are able to identify them within the educational-
Within the area of need, within education.
Yes, yes.
But when you're talking about like the complexity of the profile-
Yes.
-that, that's not within-
No, we don't-
-our control. We're not determining that profile, and just professionally being in this world of child development, I was just reading an article last night of looking at the comorbidities of youth with autism, and there's high comorbidity in neurological needs, mental health as you identified, sleep disorders, metabolic disorders, well, the list goes on, but the top three are ADHD, anxiety, and depression.
Doesn't surprise me.
No, I know it doesn't.
Doesn't surprise me at all.
Just providing extra support to what you're telling us.
I appreciate it. So, looking at enhancing our program quality, we are very eagerly awaiting academic discoveries report and the implementation of those recommendations. We really need to invest in our therapeutic supports, clinical level component, of mental health services, behavioral interventionists, even related services. We are seeing a need, as Mr. Luft shared, as parents are saying about concerns around behavior, and behavior often comes with mental health concerns. We really need to focus on more of an investment around the therapeutic. Professional development is always at the core of anything to improve our outcomes for students, so really data-driven approaches. We, I'm excited to be working very closely with JJ around getting some of our special ed teachers, you know, trained in the CAGAN strategies and those sort of things to improve instruction, as well as we need to increase our staff's confidence and skill level around behavior interventions. And, you know, globally, first and foremost, all of our students are general education students, so really looking at what our inclusive practices are in the general education classroom. And the final is really making sure that we're optimizing our use of resources, so we are, as Doc, as Mr. Luft said earlier, looking at paraprofessional training, how can we get a stronger skill set in people, in the people who work closest to our most impaired students? Also looking at assistive technology. Historically, we've really used assistive technology as a voice for students who are non-verbal, but really looking at the voice piece along with how assistive technology is embedded in their learning, in their lessons every day, that sort of thing. And then just really continuing to improve upon our alternative curriculum as well. We always want our students as close to the general ed curriculum as they can be. It is a reality that some of our students cannot access the gen ed curriculum, so just making sure that we have a really robust kind of library of tools to go to in order to meet individual needs. And Sean, I will turn the money over to you.
Thank you. And again, this is a very rolled up summary of the increase, and I should say that this is, this is the increase in all of those areas we, we saw. So for special education, this includes all the base salary increases, it includes the FTE changes, it's a very rolled up summary of a large cost area, it's twenty-four million dollars. Within the staff, the instructional services, I should say, going back to December, just to remind you, we shifted two special educators from the elementary to the middle school, so that was plus two at the middle school, minus two at the elementary, and then we added another two that were needed at the middle school for inclusion and PLC work. So that was altogether a plus two, and then as today you saw, we're moving two staff to the Medicaid funding. So here in the summary, you're seeing zero increase in FTEs, it's really two increase in headcount, but two are moving to Medicaid, so on the budget, it's a zero increase at this point. The, that's the instructional area, three thousands are all the other services, a large part of that is the special education transportation, which we just discussed, so a large part of that increase of five hundred and thirty thousand, doesn't include the Connolly buses, but it's a lot of our in-house special education transportation, as well as some other things. And then, just to point out, the nine thousand series is the tuitions. This is such a great story right now with next year's budget, because we actually budgeted, what you'll see in the quarter too, is we're saving money this year. We're projected to spend about eleven million total on our out-of-district tuition, and of course, we get a lot of credits on that line, so what you see in the actual budget doesn't equal eleven million, but we're less than that, and even increasing it, we're still not at a huge increase, which this area can be very volatile. In, in another year, what's eight percent, eight point one percent here could have been nine or ten if, if tuitions were going up, so we're, we're fortunate to be saving there right now, we're still increasing it, and that's an area that we always need to watch because it can be very volatile. But currently in the eight point one percent, that's an area that's, that's doing not as huge of an increase as typical.
Great. Any questions on the special education piece of this presentation?
No, I think I just have the same request that I had for Lisa at some point, to, to show us the full budget of the department, including circuit breaker, federal funding, funding, and grants. I think it's helpful and important.
As a head start to that too, obviously, we share the grant funding that we have, I think we've done that a few times now, so if you bring that, but that is there, I think, too, the IDA funding is there, some of the, the AL grants are there as well, so you can see too, I think, how much money we did that.
Yeah, I know you've been very-
It's just a different view.
I, I'm sure some of it will be in like your, your quarter report at the next meeting for this current budget cycle, but it just, I, I've just found over the last eight years at town meeting, a lot of people don't understand, or it's very confusing, like public education's confusing, financing is very confusing, and people think that the budget that they approve on the town meeting floor is the budget. So as we're now telling this new story of getting ready for FY26, and I know federal funding's on a different cycle, and we don't know a lot about, but as best as we can to tell the story as we're building the budget, in addition to then getting the reports on the quarterly basis, I think is the point.
I think it's just a different view, and we do see those grants, but then to see it like-
Invented in the annual.
Yeah, attached to, you know, ELE, attached to special ed. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty. So, next item on the agenda is update on the warrant articles.
Yeah, so there were two warrant articles at the last meeting that you had asked us to provide to the town to go on the March. One was to allocate, I think it was around five hundred thousand of free cash to use to support our Mass Health revolving account or something similar, so then we could use that, kind of jumpstart that account to actually get a new related service provider, as well as take actually money that our current budget to support the operating. The other one was to invest, request free cash to maximize our special ed stabilization fund to the maximum amount. So Mr. Manning actually provided both of those requests to Mr. Mazuko. Those are there. The idea now is that they are there, the question is, do you still want them to go forward? My recommendation for those particular pieces is to wait until the Maytown meeting if you want them there. I think there is a, there's a number of free cash out there that we could utilize and have flexibility utilize as we build our budget later, but out of respect for the town, I guess, you know, with the zoning pieces in March, knowing that those used to be in May, correct me if I'm wrong, they used to be in May, and they were pulled out of May, so the Maytown meeting, which is finance, wouldn't be so long, I think then to tie on one of our requests to March may not be the nicest thing to do, I guess, so to speak, but I will obviously open that up to conversation. I would support whatever decision you make, however, I do think the relationship with Mr. Mazuko right now and the town in discussing free cash, I think it allows us for, to be more flexible with free cash when we need it at the Maytown meeting than to kind of force it at this, at this point in time.
Based on your conversation with the town manager, is he amenable to that?
To be flexible with, trying to be flexible with free cash to allow us to-
Well, not just that, like that he would, you know, we, I understand the reason why we did it for March, but sort of the feedback or the signal that he gave is wait till May?
The feedback is wait till May at the finance pieces, yep.
Okay.
And whether he would need a warrant or not is the question, right? So that's the, that's the question that will come up.
I think that was my original concern, I think I voiced at the last meeting, as well, as just being, having those be the only warrants having to do with finance at the, at March would put us under a lot of more scrutiny. While it would help us jump to the front of the line, it would definitely open us up to more like, it just, it just, see, it just fits better.
I don't want to be in a point where we get to say, okay, so we're getting a warrant article for five hundred thousand dollars, and we're getting a warrant article for so much to maximize the stabilization fund, and then we need, you know, then we find out that we could have done more, right? But we say, well, you push it in March, so that's what you're going to get, you know, and then we, you know, the flexibility's gone there. I just want to be careful of that, I guess, especially in my first year's tenure too, so to speak, so I like to build a relationship- So I like to build relationships, not, you know. That's my take.
Do we need to vote for that, or no?
You would need to vote to remove them if you wanted to, I think, as you voted them on.
Yeah, because we voted to put them through.
So I think you would need to vote to not have them, not have them on. I'm not sure if you normally vote on that, or you just...
I think we would need to, just as a matter of, yeah, because we, matter of record, because we did vote to put them through.
Would you motion to table until May or something?
Well, do we want to vote now, or do we want to have BBC next week first and see how the discussion goes around warrant articles?
Totally up to you.
I don't know that the BBC discussion is gonna change my mind, anyway, because I have the same opinion I did last time, but...
Because right now, they're submitted, but we, we're just voting to poll them, and we can poll them at any time.
Oh, we could poll them next meeting, because it's...
I'm just double checking the timeline. Um, the Board of Selectmen actually is reviewing the warrant articles the night before our next meeting.
Who is Board of Selectmen?
What's that?
Would you say the Board of Selectmen is?
Yes. It's obviously, you know, we can poll them at any time before, but they are gonna debate them the night before we meet.
Okay.
Does anybody know what other warrant articles are being put forth in March? I think I had that last time, and we didn't know, do we know now?
Uh, in discussion with Mr. Mazuko, he's not sure that there aren't even enough to have a March town meeting at this point in time, so that, I will say that, so. I think, I think, he's probably going there right now, why are you saying that?
Well, there's not enough land use, you know, issues to have an entire town meeting, and that is the point of March one.
So then, can we just wait and see what the select would say, and then we'll have that feedback?
I think I'd prefer not to wait, because I don't want to have them debate something that we're just gonna cancel the next day.
We're not gonna cancel it, we're just gonna resubmit it. We're rescinding it, and then we put it on the...
Right, no, but I just, I, I just want to make sure we're not, I want to make sure no one's objecting to our request to any kind of undue, um, bad press that's gonna end up living in infamy and in the record for the next time we do want to put it through.
If we have a town meeting that has like more school committee requests than zoning, town meetings, they're gonna be like...
That's kind of where I was before. Sorry.
Okay, someone make a motion.
Yeah, so if I, I will know that because I'm not supposed to, but if anybody does want to make one to move them at this time, I mean, or they can, or somebody can make one to wait until after BBC, but I mean, I, I personally do not think, well, I know it won't change my mind either way, but...
Motion to rescind, or mo- would I motion to rescind or motion to table? Can I motion to table? No, motion to rescind, because you're taking them back. Motion to rescind the two warrant articles that we had sent for the March town meeting.
Second, any discussion?
But just to be clear, we're still looking at it for May. Like, if nobody's intent to entirely remove the warrant article, and you still want us to talk at BBC?
Yes.
I think we should definitely still talk about it at BBC, because that's...
Well, I told Maya to put it on the agenda, so.
Well, I think that's entirely, that's, I, I think that's entirely within the, yeah, because we're still looking for that May vote on overall budget, which this would really fit better, in my opinion.
Right.
Um, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So it passes four to one. All right, um, so that brings us to the next item, which is a budget transfer.
Okay, thank you. So we did revise this, by the way, this afternoon, but if you go on the agenda, you click on it, that is the revised budget transfer. So this is a budget transfer that was prepared by our assistant business manager, Gina Meng. And I've mentioned this before in relation to the budget, but we have yet this year to adjust our salary budgets for higher-up savings, higher da- higher-up costs, higher-down savings. You can see the, the description, adjusting accounts to account for staff movement, using higher-down savings to cover a higher-up savings. We've never made these adjustments. We haven't adjusted for the shifts in staffing that we've done this year. So when you look in the budget detail, a lot of the lines are just trending a little odd, and they'll look much cleaner when we do this. It's all net neutral. The original transfer was 1,373,715.68. The new transfer is 1,576,662.90. It does transfer between the functional areas, because some of the staff is in tran- is in the 3,000, some is in the 2,700s, a lot of them are in teachers, there's paras. Ms. Meng has done an excellent job, she's noted in the notes exactly what each one of these moves are. For instance, we've never adjusted our budgets for the individual contract increases that were actually made in July. So all of our budgets for salaries, many of them are still sitting at where we budgeted them approved last spring. We haven't adjusted them yet this year. And lastly, I would just say, if you remember our quarter one report, we were at a surplus of about 900,000. So overall, we're at a surplus within the salaries. This is just moving funds around to make the lines match the staff that actually filled those lines and the increases that were finally approved. So the amount is over the $25,000, and it does shift between some of the functional areas, so we do need school committee approval to do this transfer.
I think I have some questions.
Okay.
The second one, instructional salary, full-day kindergarten. So add one new SAC. Is the full-day kindergarten salary, is, is that the paras, the 2.7 paras that we traded for the SAC?
They don't, it's not going across, so on the left side are the minuses, and those notes show the minuses.
It's not a one-to-one.
Yeah, it's not one-to-one, sorry. The right side, no, I'm sorry, the notes are really only addressed the right side. She, I guess ideally, we would have had the notes on the left side, but the left side is the higher-down savings. So within all of the kindergarten teachers, when we budgeted, there was turnover, it's, you know, when there's turnover of staff, you, you budget high, and then sometimes somebody resigns or retires, and then you hire a teacher that comes in lower on the schedule. That's the bulk of the left side and why we're adjusting them.
Okay.
Well, and, and some other types of changes where we shifted some FTEs or moved some, we've traded some teachers for paras, and we've done the reverse. We've done, we've reported on that to date.
So on the left, the from, you're saying collectively, this is where it's all coming from, and then collectively, it's all going to the right? It's not this?
Yeah, and you can see on the left, it adds up to 1,576,662, and on the right, it adds up to 1,576,662. So it's all within salary budgets.
That's why, that's why some of the lefts are blank, because it's just the totals.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I see. So, so I, I guess what I was expecting was like on the left, the third one down, where it's athletics, medical, that's when it used to be a contracted services, right?
That one was, that specific one is the only non-salary one. That was when we shifted to the trainer, so we had to transfer out of contracted services to add, and you can see that one is one-to...
Well, it's off, but I guess, but I guess that's what I would, I, I thought we were, would see.
We, we do normally see it like that, but I think because this is a massive, just kind of correction, it's a little, it's not how we typically, because we do typically only see like a single transfer, right? From the one salary, one line to a, to another line.
I would say the only thing this would be missing might be a, a notes column on the left side as well.
So like on the right, Sean, where it has like the two paras to one teacher and everything?
You can see the detailed notes on the right side.
Yeah, I do. And that's part of why I was confused at the Willett, because it said like add one SAC, but we traded 2.7 paras for the SAC, I thought.
Right, so somewhere on the left, do we see a subtraction? Yeah, you can see down further, there is a subtraction on the pair line at Willett. But again, we're also subtracting, but we're also covering the difference in salaries from maybe who we budgeted to what it is now. I mean, I could see it having the notes on the left side, but again, big picture, this is just, we're going to report on the actual costs that are staffed. We, we had a surplus in, in the fall, we'll see where we do, are when we do the quarter two, and this is just moving funds around, it's not changing our staffing.
But strictly according to the policy, we need to approve it since it's...
Switching.
Oh, no, I understand why we're approving it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's just a little bit of a different format, so...
Yeah, no, I thi- I think in, in general, we will normally see ones that are the one-to-ones, just singular, but since this is like kind of a mass correction, yeah.
Well, no, I guess I am still confused, because I don't like where it's going. So it, it, it has the number, it has the counted description, it says the amount to transfer, what will still be left in the account, but then I don't know where it's going. Aren't we supposed to know where it's going? Isn't that what our policy says?
I can come back with one at the next meeting that shows more detail, if you want. I can try to come back again, some, when you're adjusting, let's say you have a particular salary line, like let's say you're Willett teachers, you budgeted a certain amount, and a certain amount of those teachers retired, so you've hired savings, that's the higher-down savings.
Yeah.
Where that's going might not be one-to-one. We might be using that higher-down savings to cover a few places where this, maybe the salaries came in a little higher.
Right.
There are specific situations where we've reported that we transferred staff, like we're taking two positions here and moving it there. Those discrete things are happening, but there's also adjustments that are being made in different places. Plus, like I said, you can see the places where the individual contracts were approved slightly higher, so where's that funds coming from? It's coming from other areas in the salary budget that we had savings based on what we budgeted. I could attempt to do a more detailed one that shows some of those, if you want to see it.
So, Sean, that would be really hard, so let's say you had the higher-down savings at Willett, and so the Willett staff, you reduce the number there because a staff member got hired at $6,000 less than the last one. But then you have the high school, high school staff member that got hired at $7,000 or $8,000 more, like how do you make that transfer from the Willett staff to the high school staff and make that even?
But that would be, but that would be under your authority, right? Because it's not changing the desert code.
Well, but he's, but he's doing that all here to make it, to make it, because it's a total cost.
If it was all within teachers, but we have teachers counselor, so they're going between, and plus the amount is over 25,000.
He's trying to do one transfer, and the policy talks about over 25,000 being approved by the committee.
It's more efficient to do it this way.
But it's not, it's not, because, all right, so for example, the admin salary school committee clerk, you're only transferring $3,678, so by policy, that doesn't even come to us, that's under you, Tim.
I could do these individual transfers, and I could just sign off on them as all individual transfers? Is that what, that's what you're saying, right, the whole...
I, I just feel like there's a couple of reports rolled into this. There's the higher-down savings, there's budget transfers under Tim's authority, and then there's true budget transfers under our authority. I understand the big picture, I'm just having a hard time following it, and, and like Karen used to give us, like if it, if it was in that situation of a higher-down savings that was going to more than one place, it was spelled out in our sheets for us. I, I'm just finding this very confusing.
It was spelled out more of in a report, though, not for us to approve.
No, depending on what it was.
Clearly, if it was changing, you know, codes, yeah.
I, I can say I'm happy to come back with another one, but the thing is...
What I would, what I would say, Sean, is why don't we look at it and see if there are, if there are things, these individual accounts are less than $25,000, and I can sign off on the transfers, we'll just do that, and then if there's anything that's requires school committee approval, we can bring it back.
So is it just more information than we need? Is that part of it?
I think it's, I think it's three different reports rolled into a budget transfer.
And some of it is we don't need it.
Okay. Well, like, it's still, I, I hear what you're saying, but it's still the oversight part where we're getting more information about the budget. I understand that it's in three, but it's the transferring piece, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second for discussion?
A second for discussion.
Discussion.
Can I, can I just make one more last comment?
Yes, please.
Even if we break this up, because I know my assistant business manager, Ms. Ma- Ms. Meng, has gone through this, you're, we're gonna do all of these transfers, and we need to do them to make the budget look correct for this year and for next year. So we are gonna do these transfers, we just may have to go back and do more work, it's on our own.
What the committee's saying is that I could probably just sign off on these particular transfers.
There's several of them, like the 18, the 18, 23, 3,000, 15,000, like those ones could, unless they change codes, could have just been, yeah.
I guess I'm just saying the flip side of that is, we're gonna have to go back and do all that work, and at the end of the day, we're still gonna request or do these transfers on our own.
So would you, you're asking for a vote, and then we could say, next time, we want to see it this way?
But we, but, but, no, I don't. I, I mean, you guys can all disagree with me, but we used to have it, that every single budget transfer had to come to the school committee, and it got ridiculous. So as a policy subcommittee, when we did our audit, we changed that. So there's, there's a, it was supposed to be a monthly report of a budget transfer signed by the superintendent, which is less than $25,000 or within cost center, right?
Yep.
And then if it crosses cost center and/or goes above 25,000, then it comes to us for, for approval. So I, I'm just feeling like it's a little bit of a budget report, a little bit of a budget transfer with our approval, and then also higher-down savings all, all into one.
If I look at the amount of transfers, for example, on the first one, 101,830, right? On the first page?
Yeah, clearly would have come to us.
That would have to come to you.
Yep.
167,000 is the next one.
But, but I think that, I think what, and I, and I get what Teresa's saying, because we just want to be, make sure we're staying within our authority and the, and the policy, so that 101,000, exactly where did it go?
Yeah.
Into what cost center, into what, you know, lines? And so that's what we would normally have gotten before, is like this 101,000 went here.
Even if it went into more than one place, it was very detailed of where it was moving.
Right.
Is there a possibility that Sean may come back with this exact same thing for transfer, because that 3,678 went to a different cost center?
Yes. Yes. But again, it would have, yes, spelled out that, just, and that's just for us to make sure that we're...
I'm just saying, Tim may not be able to sign off on any of these, he may come back with the exact same sheet, and I have to do, show you more details of where it's going.
I could sign off on the $3,678 one.
Only if it, only if it didn't change cost center.
Or if it's under 20, like the first one, that one does track across the lines, because it looks like it's the same org, and we're moving 101,830 to 100,000, and the object's changing. So the DESE function code's the same on that line, but it's over 25,000.
So I, I think we gotta come back with this and figure out, look at policy and figure out what you guys need to make it more detailed for you, in terms of where the money is going.
Yeah, it used to just almost be the journal entries, we just, we just get a printout of that.
Okay.
Yep. Is there anything, Sean, that you need, like immediately for these changes, or...
I don't think so. I think I heard the feedback, I think we can do that for the next meeting.
Okay.
But there is a, there is a motion on the table to approve it, so any other discussion?
We'll, we'll rescind it. This is supposed to be a five-minute budget transfer, and we just took 15 minutes on this, so I'll take it away, let's move along, because it's 9:30.
Are you, so you are removing your...
Yes.
Fabulous. Are you okay with that, the second?
Yes.
Fabulous.
Thank you, Sean.
Great.
Because I can't wait to get to school calendar. Did everyone laugh?
They don't know it's coming.
So good.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is the school calendar.
I'm gonna hand this off to JJ in a second, Dr. Munoz, but I just, again, you know, you, to, to go back to the themes that we were discussing, I talked to you a lot already about the opportunities for PLC structures and the opportunities for us to have time for our staff to run those PLCs. So Dr. Munoz is gonna share a memo and a calendar with you in just a moment that has options to allow us to, to do that. These are options for consideration, options for discussion. We're not asking you to vote on these calendar options tonight, they're strictly for discussion and to help us understand the best way to go, whether it be for next year or the year after or whatnot. So with that, I will give it off to Dr. Munoz, and would you like me to show the memo or the calendar, or...
Calendar's fine, we can just talk through it. So this is, as, as, as Dr. Love mentioned, this is for, obviously, discussion only, we're not asking for a vote tonight. What we did is we heard what you guys had to say, we went to our administrators, we asked them for their feedback as well, and so this new draft is just another talking point to say, here's what some administrators were asking for, and they wanted to see, here's what some things that you guys wanted to see, and here's what, what it, what it, here's another topic for discussion, so Joan can go ahead and let us know what she, what she really thinks.
We all have our specialties.
Yep, we do.
Yep. One of the things that we, that we heard is that, because last year, we mentioned the possibility of starting before Labor Day. We knew it was in Unit A negotiations, we were gonna talk about it.[1770.23] We were able to come to an agreement with Unit A to start before Labor Day, as long as it didn't start before August 26th. And so the people wanted to see what that looked like. We did start before Labor Day. Originally, we had a draft that started on a Wednesday, knowing that we needed at least one PD day. Dr. Love and I sat down and talked about it. And we didn't think that it would be setting up teachers and staff and administrators appropriately to have only one PD day, especially when it's contractually obligated for us to allow teachers to set up their classrooms and not really have administration time. So then we said, okay, let's go ahead and move that to the Thursday. But then people were like, well, it's only one day before Labor Day, why would we do that? We wanted to show it so it can see what it looked like. And then we all know that mostly in the first day or the first week of school, it's a lot of routine building, a lot of social emotional skills. And so it can be like a big hurrah. And then people can reflect over the weekend what they need to do the following week. So that's, that was the rationale, just putting that in, that this feedback we heard, so we wanted to show what that looked like. I would love to put all PD in the beginning of the year, so actually implementing it throughout the whole year. However, listening to that feedback, we wanted to show you a version of that, of this, starting before Labor Day. And we also got feedback that it was not good for student attendance to come back right before the weekend hits after New Year's, New Year's Day. So instead of coming back January 2nd, which would have been a Friday, we said, well, let's make that a PD day. It's been, it's been, it's happened in Norwood before, where we've had PD day after New Year's. And I was confident with the cooperative learning PD that we are learning, that we have done. We're gonna be finishing that this, this coming year, that our teachers have already been exposed three days to it. So two years ago, there was some heavy staff call out on that PD day, which may be nervous to have it on that PD day. But I know they've already attended three professional developments on cooperative learning. So I feel like, I feel more comfortable knowing that they can catch up if a teacher had to be out for whatever reason. So we wanted to show that version, what that looked like too. Initially, we had seven early release days and three release days that happened before school vacations, so before Thanksgiving week, before winter break, and the last day of school. And with the PLC model that we're trying to enhance with our department chairs at the middle school, it's gonna be a new middle school, and the department chairs at the high school, speaking with them, knowing how valuable their time is to work with teachers, we wanted to find a solution so where we can have teachers have more time together for not only horizontal alignment, but vertical alignment as well. And so we have a early release day that's twice a month, starting in October and going through May. We were trying to be strategic in using any days that maybe that we were trying to move from a no school day to a school day. So for instance, Good Friday is on here as a early release day. But it'd be an early release day for teacher professional development, where students can still go home, and yet we would still honor any religious exemptions. If a teacher says, I need to be out, by all means, you should, you should go up and go and worship your faith. That is the rationale behind this new draft calendar. Obviously, we're not gonna talk about the, all the other states except for New England. How breaks is different, even, even though Connecticut doesn't have February break anymore. They got rid of February break. So there's my New England state for you, Joan.
Good for them. Good for them.
Boy, you said we'd be the first, we wouldn't be the first, we'd be the second.
We don't border them really. They only own the western part of the state.
They're, they're part of New York.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We border them, that's.
They're two thirds of our southern border.
Yeah, oh, there, in the Midwest. They're past Worcester, it's past Worcester.
In the Midwest.
I am more than happy to hear anything you guys have to say. My goal and objective is to give teachers more time to plan because I feel like if they're planned and prepared and they get to share best practices with each other and they get the proper su- support from the district, we will have more effective and efficient classrooms. And so that's, I am open for all those discussions. If you want to consider having full PD days, more full PD days and less half days, then we're adding on to the end of June, and so we're getting closer to July for the end of the school year.
There's a couple additional adds there. Just, as you know, as I discussed earlier, childcare is an issue, is a thing. So we would have to establish some kind of a, a model, a method to support families in caring for their children and students during these times, if there were additional days. There are options here that include a change of the time you would have for early release. Do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so we, we know that it is hard for any teacher to teach in a shortened day. So we looked at other districts and talking to some of my administrators in the district who maybe live outside of district and what maybe their school districts do, we saw that potentially extending a early release day from 11:30 or 12 o'clock dismissal to a 90 minute before their normal dismissal time would allow for more time for kids to be in school, more handling of the special schedule to elementary school, and still at adequate time for our teachers to be in professional learning communities and be able to really learn from each other and learn from administrators and get the support from our district as well.
We'll also just share quickly, you know, there are a lot of different moving parts to having a calendar like this. And there are different options out there, right? You could have more PD days in full, in general, to get these things done. But the idea is that you would have one of these days being the work within the school, one of these days being a work with your cross PLC. And so those are, those are there. There are things we have to consider like transportation, there are things that we have to consider like the childcare. But those are definitely in play in conversation. But this is one way to meet the PLCD that we've been talking about tonight.
Yeah, also, I, I have no, no worries in sharing with you guys when I try to find people who have experienced this type of model. Lisa Bouzot happens to be here today and her district, as an educator, which before she came to Norwood, they have early release day every week. And so I asked her from an educator, how did it benefit and what are the downside of that? And then she has a parent, she has two girls in the school system, and she is a single parent. And so how does she manage that? Because working families is something that we think about. And so she was able to share some of those concerns and how she handles that and some of the things the district does to handle that, which is where Dr. Love and I start talking about a model where we can have more support for students and not have to worry, have students worry, and not have families worry about after-school care if it's an early release day.
I think the final thing I'll say about this is that the, you see most of these early release days are on Thursdays, which is done for consistency purposes and those, those kind of things. There are thoughts in our mind that we might have to modify that, right? So, for example, the high school's on a five-day schedule, so, cycle, so the same classes will get hit every time. We understand that, we know that, that's something that we'll consider as we, as we're moving forward. But this is for consideration in general to have those two priorities.
Is the theory of having those more time for P, for professional learning communities for our teachers, that's the whole theory?
Yes, Kay.
Question and a comment. My question is to verify. So the, I see number three was the before Labor Day start. Number two says principal feedback. I'm guessing that means you've gotten input on that, but it has the early release days. Just real quick, so the original was, which, just one of the ones that we saw at the last meeting, like the base.
The, the original was starting after Labor Day. The principal feedback is two days before Labor Day, so Wednesday, Thursday.
We saw that last meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, it was, it was there.
Okay.
It was there a little bit, but, but they also had the feedback of not coming back on January 2nd.
And then that one.
So you made it a no school day.
And then in the third one had, is, is one day before Labor Day, but with the PLC half days added. So I think for me, the fourth option, if we are not gonna, you know, pull the trigger on the PLC days, you know, in this next year, would be the one day before Labor Day, the not fourth, not January 2nd, and then what the rest of that calendar looks like.
So just, my comment was that I think the PLC is something I think seems very important. It sounds like people are willing to, or wanting to invest in that. If we have concerns, which I think my colleague will speak to, about the shift in parent requirements and implications for families, maybe we, like, it sounds like a good next step would be to get, to get community input, which I think you talked about Superintendent Love. And what is, is it helpful for us to, not to get ahead of ourselves, but to say what we would want community input on for going forward? Sorry that took so while to spit out.
So you want, you basically are asking, should we want to say now what, what we want?
Maybe we get Joan's input, but then speak, I just wanted to, someone to speak to the process and timeline for getting, having families tell us how this would work for them and if, if this is something they're interested in. So we could explain it to them in a comprehensive way.
Right, Joan.
So for the third one, we've added a ton of professional development, which I'm generally in favor of. However, we've added it all on half days, which I'm not in favor of. If you've ever watched a school committee meeting, you know that I hate half days with a passion.
They're not half days. We gotta say early release because 90 minutes is not.
They're half, they're half days.
Three quarters.
They're half days.
Well, but there's.
So for, over the past four years, we've come back from COVID. We've changed our school start times. We've readjusted our elementary school times. And now next year, we're gonna be opening a brand-new middle school. I would respectfully, I know you guys are inheriting this district and didn't live through that, but could we just leave something alone for a little while? Maybe for two years in a row so that everybody can get their feet under them and figure out what exactly the heck is going on. I just feel like I'm also not hearing teachers clamoring for more professional development. I've sat on a number of negotiation teams. That has not been a drive, I, my, I would not say that there has been, ever been a public outcry from our teachers saying, please give us more professional development on a number of half, on every other half day throughout the month. That's not something I have heard as a school committee member. If I am incorrect, union leadership, please let us, please let me know. And so I, I, I'm not seeing the benefit to doing this for our students. You will be hard-pressed to convince me, especially at the elementary school, that the quality of learning that happens on an early release day is the same as the quality of learning that happens in a full day. I would much rather see us talk about going to more full days instead of early release days to get that professional development. And if you look at the first two calendars that we have, not the third calendar, the original draft and the principal feedback draft, what it does is it would require us to add two to three days of extra time, which would put us out on what, the 17th or the 18th, which is still entirely respectable.
So you'd have to move graduation from the first. Just throwing that out there.
From June 1st?
Oh, it actually would be May.
It would be June 1st.
And I'm sure, I was gonna make a crack about Desi, but I'll stop myself because it's late.
Joan, I think I do want to clarify because I also was on the same negotiating. And I think you're right, we didn't hear about PD as much, but we did hear quite a bit about common planning time and more, you know, professional collaboration.
Yep.
And that's, I think we keep saying PD. And yes, very technically, it'll be PD, but this is more the PLC.
Also, which can be accomplished in full day, PD days.
Totally. And also, sitting on this committee for the past two years, I've heard people clamoring for a change. We have a new regime that's in here and we need to support them in what they're going to do. And I think we have a really comprehensive plan that has been placed before us by the superintendent. And I would argue that we would be. We would be remiss in not supporting them in that, so.
This is not, there has, I would challenge you to find minutes of somebody clamoring for change, like, about this. And I can probably find a whole bunch more minutes of people clamoring for change, not like this.
We can disagree.
Yep, we can.
But I just, I think sometimes this committee talks out of both sides of its mouth, so.
I have never changed my opinion on early release days.
No, I'm not challenging you with early release days, but.
The only, and, and I, I've already voiced these concerns to, to Mr. Love as well, that my only concerns about these, you know, I actually, in general, like, like this model. I like the, the PLC, you know, aspect. I, I've, I've said, other districts do do once a week half days or early release days, what, what is going on? And I, and I, four people start crying for my head on a steak because of working parents. I'm also a working parent. I completely like, I'm not trying to dis, um, to not hear that aspect of it. So there was that, the, the discussion about providing care on those early release days. My only concern was, you know, I think you would underestimate the number of people that would want to do that. I think there'd be a whole lot of working parents saying, well, just leave my kid in there till the end of the actual school day. And then what does that mean for space? And then what does that mean for actually, you know, performing your PLC or getting your, your teachers together? Because you have buildings entirely full of students. Because if that were me in that position, I'd be like, yep, I gotta come out of Boston, that ain't happening. So you're staying there until that, you know, that, that last bell rings, take that late bus, which ends up being your entire school. So that was my, one of my concerns. And then the other was, obviously, we talked about the transportation issues. If you needed, if kids were going home at the 90 minute, but then you also needed, and does that, you know, it's almost like a late bus thing at the, you know, at the middle school type or high school level. So I don't know that we're ready with all of those logistics to pull the trigger on that yet. But I do, in theory, support that type of a model because I think it is very important to get teachers together and those PLCs too, to, to talk about their craft.
I would say that no teacher ever clamor for PD that is drive, thrown upon them from someone else, right? That's certainly a, a, a good statement. I, I do think the PLC structure is a teacher leadership model. It's not necessarily a PD. They could help inform what that PD would be, but this is time for them to work together in teams, which I think they do want, right? And would support kids across the district. Having said all that, you know, obviously, there's a lot of, lot with this, right? So, I mean, you all make good points on how we can, you know, what way to do it right, what days to use, the support for the kids if there are additional early release days. So my goal here today was to put the ideas on the forefront. So we're talking instruction, we're talking what's best for kids. We're talking how to best support teachers to give them the opportunity to do what's best for kids. I do think that getting feedback from, from families is very important in any process that we go through to determine how to do that. Whether it's, hey, would you support early release, additional early release? If kids were supported, would you support additional PD time, full PD days? If the school day was extended for multiple, if school year was extended for multiple days? All those kinds of things are feedback that we should get prior.
Before we put feedback out about childcare or support and asking about that, I, we are a high-needs district. 56% of our students need support. You're talking about trying to create a childcare system with 50% of our most qualified staff not being available. The liability that that opens us up to is insurmountable to me. I'm not saying the Paris aren't great. I'm just saying that if you strip all of the teachers out of the structure, which is what you have to do to have effective PD, PLC, whatever you want to call it, and keep even 60% of your kids, 56% of our students are high needs, how are we going to, how are we going to ensure that we are meeting the needs of our, of the student services departments that we just saw in that type of? I just don't think it's feasible. I don't think we can do it. And I, because I don't think we can do it well, I think it's gonna open us up to liability.
I, I hear you and I thank you for that. I would not do feedback tomorrow. Certainly, there's enough feedback coming in for, for, you know, that's, that wouldn't be my plan. I would think of something closer to the end of the year. I would want to think about more strategy and more objectively about how this could be implemented, if anything. I don't know how we would provide that support yet. I would think about alternative avenues to do that. You know, and to address some of the points that have been brought up here today. But I would just want to be able to get as part of it, community feedback in terms of, you know, is there a taste for this?
Right.
Is there, are there folks that say, hey, this is a great idea for our staff, for our kids and so on? And from teachers, you know?
Right.
To even know if we should even think about a model like this in the future. And then maybe get feedback about, hey, what would an alternative model be to provide these PLC structures in the future? So there's a lot of different ways to, to get to a, a certain goal and outcome. And it would just be one way to, to help figure that out. So, again, just one on the table for conversation.
I do also want to mention, just for public consumption, I know that there is, will be, and probably already are people going, why the hell would we come back one day before a long weekend? And just want to reiterate what Dr. Munoz said about, a lot of times, that first day back is really just noise, right? It's, hi, how are you? How was your, how was your summer? I did this, I did that, you know? Everybody get up and tell me what you did this summer. It's very, like, those first couple of days of school can be ridiculously informal. You don't get much done. So, you know, coming back, you know, a day before to kind of get a day out of the way and really just get everybody into the buildings and familiar with the buildings, like, it's, that, that's kind of the, the idea there. So before people crucify us for, for the love of God, one Thursday before the, you know, why am I coming back for that?
Well, a lot of people, based on last year's discussion, were asking, were in favor of a pre-Labor Day start. Labor Day happens to be early next year, so that's a little different.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the, the feedback was a little interesting, though, because there was the pre-Labor Day and then there was the very clearly, do you want to come back in August? And those aren't always the same thing.
Yeah.
Right. They, they aren't. And they're not the same thing to me either. But any personal preferences aside, I, I, I hear that side. But um, any personal preferences aside, I, I, I hear that side of it, but then I do also know to Joan's point, not directly, but building on the high needs. We have a lot of students that transitions are hard. And I don't know if one day at the end of summer and then, oh, we're not going to see you again for four more days. It's, it, it could be hard for, for some students. Um, I think there's also some implications of coming back one day at the end of August that's different at the high school level, especially for some kids enrolled in like AP courses that your, your summer work is due on that first day. It's just different at, at different levels, I think. But I, I do support the philosophy behind supporting our students and the PLC. I don't have a strong aversion to early releases. Um, but I do also agree with both Joan and Anne Marie and like the, just the logistics and the concerns and how are we going to implement it? Um, and there's so much we're already trying to figure out how to implement in September. I'm not sure I would want to add this on, but how can we work towards it is where I am.
Yeah, I appreciate the creative ideas and looking at different options, for sure. And it's important to look at other districts, like you're saying, and, but, you know, how similar are they to our student population, et cetera, et cetera? So um, I would, you know, we, we do, we should pursue that PLC time, for sure. Um, and this doesn't mean it, it wouldn't work, but there's some obviously legitimate concerns, so.
Okay, so we're not voting on this today. Um, but does, are there anything specific we want?
Sounds like we're coming back to a calendar with you with an after Labor Day start again, right? I'm hearing that as an option. We will, I, I will say, we'll probably have to vote on a calendar beginning of February. Definitely, we want families to know, obviously, when, and staff to know when the schedule will be so they can start scheduling their own vacations and holidays.
Should we expect another round at the next meeting? And if it actually is acceptable, we can even vote on it then if they're.
Yeah, I think so. I think so. I think we have some good feedback to put.
We can make a deadline for ourselves. The first meeting in February will be the absolute last. We do not want to go any further than that.
Yep, absolutely. I appreciate.
Okay, all right. So if there's no more discussion on that, we'll move on to policy. Um, we'll first have a policy subcommittee update.
Really quickly, um, we met today, there's a couple of policies um and procedure updates that Tim is going to talk to you about. We are, I'm still working on the draft for the guideline document, which is, you know, we'll come to you guys to find a final thing in March for our school committee goals. That's it. So just since we're running, let, toss it over.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so uh, Desi has come in as part of their tiered focused monitoring process. Um, and they have identified certain items that um need to be changed in our, and I'll kind of work through these together in both our student handbooks as well as our policy JKAA, um, which is our student physical prevention and restraint policy. Um, I will share that these um procedures and these changes that they are requesting for both are already things that are procedures, the things that we are doing in district on a day-to-day basis, they are required by law. Um, there is nothing that we can do to, or, or should do to change what they are requesting here, um, because they are based in, in the legal requirements that we have. So there are changes to the student handbook, and I want to thank um Lori for putting these things together for us based on the tiered focused monitoring review. Um, but the first are changes to the student handbook that are outlined in a memo that the Simeno has created for us, um, that is shared up here. Essentially, it is modifying the non-discrimination statements within the handbooks for the Norwood High School, athletic handbook, the Norwood Middle School, um, Cookley, uh, the, all the elementary schools, LMPA, and the staff handbooks, essentially changing the non-discrimination statement to be legally required language. As you know, we've modified much of our, you, you might have noticed your email signature now has the discrimination statement, so we put a lot of different plate things in there, um, but just update those. There's a language to the student discipline standards. Now, you have already updated the policies on student discipline at a previous meeting this year. This is just taking those changes um that you've updated and putting them in the actual handbook addendums as well. So they are in the handbooks as well. So that is the student handbook changes. I'm not going to get into too much detail here. The policy subcommittee reviewed this with me this morning in detail and I asked, answered many of their questions, but the changes that have been made are strictly changes to the law that were required to do. And so I'm asking, I guess I will, uh, I'll go to the restraint one quickly too. That particular policy, JKAA, again, just modifies um uh the policy to be in compliance with the law, but again, we have very standard and strict procedures that we have as a district already in place, are already aligned to the requirements. Desi reviewed those and found them to be in compliance. It is now just the policy that we have to kind of jump up to speed. So I will take any questions on either of those, Madam Chair, if, if you'd like. Um, but ultimately, I'm asking for a vote of the committee to make a modification to both the policy and the handbooks as, as requested in the memo and in the um policy before you JKAA tonight.
Quick question about the handbook. Will this require that um every, all the students' parents will have to re-sign off in Aspen?
I, they will not, I will not ask them to re-sign off in, in Aspen. Um, I mean, these are things that we are already putting into place, the procedures that we're following. Um, the, the things in discipline, for example, that are on our end, are things that we have to do, for example, provide those restorative practices, right? Before we actually discipline. It's nothing that's changing for them that would say, oh, a student, you should have known this before you did X, Y, and Z, which is why we happen to sign off on the first one.
Discussion, Joan, yes?
No discussion. I'd just like to note that the policy subcommittee voted to recommend to approve as well. And I'd like to make a motion that the committee approved the policy changes as recommended.
Policy and handbook?
Policy and handbook.
Okay, is there a second?
Can we do those together?
Uh, oh, that's a good point. Maybe we should take them separately, just, well, they're.
Only if someone wants to.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a change, not a new, so um.
Second.
I think we could do that together. Unless somebody, if anybody would like to call that out. Any other discussion? Well, seconded by David.
Just a question. I, I understand why we're doing this, but um, the JKAA, is MAS C not in compliance with their policy?
So the vast majority of the MAS C policy is in compliance?
Yeah.
Um, the piece that we were missing is the change in reporting. So we had our whole, we were on the whole recording. We need to update it to the new reporting. MAS C is silent on the recording.
In terms of how, how fast you have to report or the mechanism of reporting?
It's very spelled out in the regulations about how you report. And so we needed to add that piece. It used to be like, if it was over so many minutes, then you would report it. We have to not report every single restraint.
Mm-hmm.
And there are specific guidelines on how fast we have to do that.
Mm-hmm.
How fast we have to notify parents, as well as if there's an injury that is sustained during the restraint, there's a whole policy around doing that. I mean, a whole process around doing that.
But that's law, right? And Desi felt we had to reiterate law in our policy, which was something we worked really hard to take out in our policy audit.
Desi's really funny.
Because I don't, incorrect me wrong, the way I've been reading our policy, our policy wasn't saying anything incorrect. Desi was just saying it wasn't complete. And they wanted it more complete with process and law?
Desi has been, Desi's very specific about these kinds of things. I went through this in NAC two a few years back. And even though our policy, I, I will tell you, it was exactly what we should have had in the policy.
Yeah.
But they wanted so many specifics in the policy as well as the procedures that we had shared with them.
Yeah.
It didn't make any sense to me.
Yeah.
But it was a finding, it was something we had to fix. So this, we're experiencing the same thing.
Yeah. It's not something we, it's not recommending, Desi.
If it's helpful at all.
Yeah.
They have reviewed every change I have put forward to you all.
Yeah.
So everything there, they have signed off on being what they're looking for.
Although I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to understand because it, it just very much goes against something that was the core of our policy audit, which was if it's the law, you take it out, you reference the law, but then when the law changes, you're not constantly having to go back and change your policy. And that process is not supposed to be a policy. So I'm going to vote no because it goes against everything in the audit. But I don't want anybody who worked on this to think my nose against you. This is just not policy. This has become not policy.
No, but it's, it's Desi's relentless pursuit of data and trying to get school districts and professionals. If there's a misstep, this is absolutely consistent with what they do. Absolutely consistent with the disciplinary law change.
In my mind, and I'm not asking you to do this because I think we need to improve this policy, in my mind, the, the, the school committee agrees or the school committee requires that the district administration complete required report, report, reporting requirements.
Yeah.
Should do it, right? And then we have significant procedures on how that is done. We do. Our procedures are compliant, right? We were told that.
Right.
So it doesn't make any sense to me, but I would say that we need to improve it to move forward.
Yeah. And, and just one more point and then you all can say yes and I'll say no. JKA already has a part of what they had you put in JKAA. And JKAA is an addendum that builds off of JKA. So again, therefore, it is not needed in JKAA.
It's Desi overreaching telling us what to put in our policies.
I, I just want it on the minute that this goes against a core of what we worked really hard in our policy audit. This is not policy, this is law and process, and they're all important, and we should be following all of them, but they're different.
And to all the members of the community that are listening.
Yes, they do. I fought them before.
On this, on this?
I will fight Desi. Anything you hate, fight.
It's all the members of the community that are listening as well as Desi, we are following these procedures that are legally required already.
I'm speaking for myself. When the rest of my colleagues do what they're supposed, when my colleagues do what Mr. Leff is recommending we do, I will then support it.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye opposed. Passes four to one.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on to the next section, new business. We have some job descriptions.
Yeah, so um, I will start with the student service job description. Um, as obviously Lori is moving to bigger and better pastures next year. Um, so we are in the process of hiring a director of student services to begin July first, two thousand twenty-five. Um, here I have before you a job description for that. This was reviewed by our attorney and worked through with multiple staff members and myself. Um, and so I prepared this job description to post it as soon as possible. And I also have a timeline that is detached to this that I can share as well, but I wanted to start with the job description and see if I can't get that approved by the school committee this evening.
Any questions, discussion about the job description in our packets? Move to approve. By Joan, is there a second? Seconded by Kate. Uh, any other discussion?
Just feedback, I like the formatting. I know this is how we've done some other job descriptions, but, you know, breaking it up by the high level, like, you know, fiscal management, community engagement, et cetera, and then underneath it, it makes sense.
Very clear. Thank you. Um, okay, any other discussion? Uh, all those in favor? Aye. Passes five to zero.
Um, the next part of this process is the timeline. Um, this is a time, similar timeline that I've used in the past, that people also have used. Um, now, I just want to note, I understand that this is one of the positions that the school committee will point, and that is, there's, there's a couple of those. This timeline and this process allows for the school committee to have a member as part of the full interview committee, and obviously, uh, the position at the end coming to you for appointments from, based on my recommendation. The, uh, and I know there's probably different ways that you've done this before, so I'm happy to hear that. But I think that this particular process will give both the staff and the community a really good look at different candidates as we move forward. Essentially, we would post by January twenty-second, working with the HR department. I've already talked to Lisa Yu about doing this process. We would meet with student service staff, we would meet with family caregivers to get input and feedback on what kind of a candidate they are looking for. We would then have a review kind of by central office administrators to, to kind of review the resumes that come in. And we would pick hopefully eight to twelve candidates to come in and actually do a screening interview with the central office staff to get, likely it would be H online, just to get, get, get an understanding of, of who's coming in, answer a few screening questions. From there, we would send hopefully five to seven candidates, um, two formal interviews. That interview committee would be essentially comprised of the director of human resources, a school principal, a special education administrator within the district, a nurse, the assistant superintendent of academics, director of ELE, a member of the school committee, you would have representation there, obviously, one member of CPAC, a special education teacher, a related service staff, a guidance counselor, one member from the union, one student service admin assistant, and, and one member of the community at large. The idea there is that we would have a, a broad spectrum of folks that would do forty-minute interviews with each of these candidates, get feedback, they would complete, um, I think many of you had seen the one that I did last year, kind of a questionnaire where they're rating different folks. They're not talking about the candidate yet, they're rating the candidates. Um, and those feedback scales would then go to the director of HR for, and she would run that process. And then the ratings would come back to me. We would pick three candidates from that mix who would do site visits at each, um, at least public three of the schools. I'm not sure which ones yet. And that, that, during that day, they would get to meet staff, they would get to um, um, kind of work through and see teachers. They would then come at that same day to do an interview with the central office staff and a final interview with, with me, um, so I can get a little one-to-one time to understand and see how they work. There would be an evening forum with parents and caregivers and staff members where those both would be able to provide input and feedback around the candidate. And then from there, we would take that feedback. And I would do reference checks if appropriate and then bring a candidate to you for a final appointment by you, a recommendation to you for appointment. So that's kind of the overall process I put together here. There are dates here, there are times here. I will take any feedback that you have on, on this process that I'd like to put out there.
Discussion on the timeline.
My only question is, did we talk about, um, has one of you already volunteered for this?
No, but I will.
No, I, I was going to say, if it was needed, if somebody wanted to drag me on, I would.
No, we have not had that discussion yet.
Okay.
Well, whoever does it has to be available for that full day, right? On March fifth?
Yeah, uh, March fifth, that's the big day. That's the formal committee interview. So yes, absolutely.
Okay. Let's move.
Are you part of that or you're, you're not part of that? You're having HR lead it?
Yeah, HR will lead it.
Okay. It's a little different than we've done in the past. And the development of the questions, that is not the screening committee that develops them?
We will, um, I will work on that part with Lisa. We haven't developed that yet. I'll likely work with the cabinet-level team to do that, and I certainly can get your input on those questions. I think I'll have to get input from, well, hmm, let me think about that a little bit. Let me think about that a little bit. I want to make sure that we get specific, good questions down, but also get members of the committee to actually give their input on those questions too. So it'll probably be the formal committee that would, we get input from questions.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for putting the whole timeline together in advance so we know exactly what it'll look like and what people are committing to.
Yeah.
Do we want to say who will be the school committee representative at this meeting? Do we want to just do that now and get that out of the way?
I would.
I would say so. Is that, is that Teresa volunteering unless anybody else wants to pry it from her?
Yeah, I'm able to do it unless somebody else wants to do it.
Yeah, I'm able to do it unless somebody else wants to do it.
Okay. Then I think that is a done deal. Then Teresa, you will represent us on the interview committee.
I'll put it in my calendar now.
Does it vote on the job description or did we?
You already voted on the job description.
So now, motion to approve the timeline for the selection of the director of student services?
Let me ask you a question. Is this something that you have to vote on?
The timeline?
I don't think so. This is more just for your review, so you.
Yeah, and I think maybe we shouldn't, just in case it changes or shifts, let's, yeah, let's not do.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. I think in the spring when we were interviewing for our assistant superintendent, we, because of so school committee led because of the situation we're in, then we voted on it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
So that's fine. I just thought I was doing what was right.
No, thank you. Okay. So that looks like we are all set with that section. Do you have anything else you need from us for that?
Not for that one.
Wonderful. So we'll move on to the next one.
Okay. So this next one, I am going to ask you to move on. I want to go back and to the beginning of the meeting, right, and multiple threads throughout, where we've talked about the director of safety compliance and communication. Again, this is a job description that has been reviewed by our attorney and modified a bit based on our recommendations. This is a position that I would like you to vote on this evening. It's a position that I believe that we need to have in the budget for next year. And I would like a commitment from you folks, I hope for a commitment from you folks to support this position regardless of how the budget comes down next year. So this is something that I would ask that we, that you approve tonight and that if it's approved, that I am able to post for this shortly for next full year. We've had a conversation about what this position does, but you'll see there are duties related to safety, collaborating with Norwood Police, our facilities, technology department to coordinate documented emergency management, security preparedness, supporting students and staff with safety-related issues, establishing and maintaining communication and coordination with local, state, and federal agencies, crisis communication procedures, training faculty, staff, and students regularly on best security and safety practices. You see this compliance piece in here on policy limitation and procedures, overseeing and monitoring staff on the district's bullying prevention intervention plan, which has been a common theme, reviewing school committee policies to ensure they're implemented and complied with. Public record request piece I put in here. Right now, our technology office does all those in a way that we want to make sure we're in compliance with that. Investigating staff and student incidents that come up, serving as the compliance officer for civil rights in Title IX, sexual harassment grievance officer, PRS complaints, leadership on new mandates from the State Department of Education, Department of Education, though it never happened at all. You see there's a communication strategy here, implementing a communication plan, being a public relations person, and offering guidance to district administration on communication strategies and articulating our district mission and vision. Some help with negotiating collective bargaining. I mean, when we talk about safety, we have, we have a district safety committee now that we're trying to collect, add on safety and make recommendations and that goes directly into collective bargaining, so that that parts here. Evaluating faculty and staff in some ways, representing the school district here at times, budget, and finally, other, all other duties as assigned, which is a common one. But I will take questions on this job description, but this is again, something that I would appreciate if you would vote in tonight, so I can, and support this in next year's budget regardless of what happens as we move forward.
But I think we can take that, those separately. So I know obviously there's a job description in front of us that, you know, we can approve the job description and then we can decide after if we want to support the actual filling of the position, you know, regardless, and we would support that being in the budget either way. So I do think we can still approve the job description even if the decision of the committee is to not be throwing our full support behind it for the next fiscal year, but.
I support it. I understand why all of this is needed and how much work it involves and why it needs dedicated positioning. I had said this before, it does seem like a lot and I know that communications objective to have proactive campaign, it seems separate from this. So I, I think it's innovative and I am eager to see how it works, but would also be encourage the district to keep an eye on that because it's, you know, there's a lot there. And so to make sure that it's all being covered, I would want us to make sure that that really is feasible. I get that we sometimes come up with creative combinations and things like that. That would be my only, my only note, but I definitely appreciate the need for it and would be, I think it's, just want to reiterate what you said, that this is being called for in terms of safety from all constituents, teachers, parents, community members. So in terms of, and then being communicated to also is something that everyone, all stakeholders will be able to appreciate. So it's definitely needed in that statement.
If I could just call out too, this is assisting the superintendent, right? So this is, this is not take away my responsibility to communicate with the constituents, right? And to communicate during crisis and to message out and to work with staff and to work around safety. These are all things that I'm still going to play a huge role as I go forward.
Right.
So the feasibility piece is a great question, right? But I just want folks to know that I'm still doing, I'm doing it all right now, right? So it's got to be feasible somehow, but it's, it's not something that I'm going to push off. It's something that I'm going to work and collaborate with to move forward. Just, I just want to.
Yeah, there's an opportunity to be doing more proactively, have good things going on in terms of a communication strategy. There's, you're doing a great job with what's needed. There's definitely an opportunity to do more.
And I think we would be, you know, just to point out that, you know, the first title, first part of the title is director, you know, director of safety. And we've heard from multiple groups, from staff, from parents, from administration, that, you know, there, there needs to be more support in that area, that you were doing as well as we could have expected you to do coming into a new district. But, you know, it's, it's a very challenging environment with our student needs and just kind of where we are, social, emotional, social media, you know, all these areas. It's a very challenging time and to have some more dedicated resource to helping solve the multitude of safety issues that we are seeing in our schools. And I think that that would be some, you know, I'm definitely supportive of that because it's, it's just not getting better and not for lack of trying. So have, you know, putting some dedicated resource on that is definitely something high on my priority list for sure. But I do agree with Kate that I think communications gets a very, like, it's underrated how, you know, you kind of, everyone kind of throws communications into a, oh yeah, just communications, but.
Yeah.
That's why folks, that's why people have full-time jobs in communications.
That's true.
Well, and for that reason, like, this is too full-time. Like, you could, it doesn't matter. Like, I think it can be done.
Yeah.
The right person could probably do it well, but it gets.
Just keep an eye on it.
It gets short shifted a lot.
I agree.
Because other things take priority, as they should sometimes, so.
Yep. All right. Any other discussion on this job description?
Just to say I fully support it, fully understand the need. You know, it's already been said that the feedback from the community and staff is there, but also we have tried different versions of this job and these rules over the past four years. And I know we had to take some things out of this current year budget, but I believe, Mr. Manning, when you give us your quarterly report in two weeks, we're in a pretty good place in our budget. And perhaps we could have left some things in that we took out and we were trying to be fiscally responsible and we're still trying to be fiscally responsible, but we're also trying to be responsible in all ways to the safety and wellbeing of our students and staff and that is utmost important. So wholeheartedly support it.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Joan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kate Cotton and first.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes five to zero. So separately, though, I think we should take, I think we should take a vote to, of support for this position in the budget for next year because it is, you know, just something that we would be committing to regardless of what we're asked to do during the budget season by BBC and the Finance Commission. So would anyone like to make a motion to that? Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Joan. Seconded by Kate. Any other discussion?
Just to throw it out there and then, I don't know if anybody would be open to an amendment and that process confuses me, but I do want this in the budget, but I feel that in order for something like this to be successful and in respect to all the feedback, we also need to make a commitment to at least one of the behavioral, additional behavior interventionists getting into the budget. So I wonder if we could say we're making a commitment now to this position and also at least one behavior interventionist.
Can you tag that on like that?
I'm going to reject that friendly amendment.
Okay.
It just, it changes the scope of the motion too much. I think it's best as a separate motion.
While we don't disagree with you.
Yeah. It just, it's not an amendment. It's only, it's an entirely new, it's adding a position.
They're both within safety.
I reject the amendment.
That's okay.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The pass is five to zero.
Thank you very much.
All right. So that brings us one more job description.
This final job description here is a modified job description that, Mr. Manning, do you want to talk about this really quick or do you want me to?
Sure. So this is a modified job description for the transportation office. We've had an assistant director of transportation position, which has been posted for quite a long time and we haven't really had any success getting a qualified candidate. So we're changing the position to transportation and business office analyst. It has a lot of the same, most of the same responsibilities as the assistant director, but it also has a little bit more of a focus on analyst, analysis, data, making things more efficient, electronics. That's like a huge part of the transportation office now. And it also adds to this position to utilize that position in the business office for other types of analysis, like special education, the budgets, presentations. So it adds more capacity to the business office on a whole and it still does almost all of what the assistant director position did. Our goal is if we make this change, we should, should have some qualified candidates.
Any discussion on this job description?
Continue my role.
You go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, moved by Joan. Seconded by David. Any other discussion?
No, I think, I think it's clear, which is to reiterate, we would no longer than be trying to fill the assistant director role.
That's correct.
Correct. All right. Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes five to zero. All right. So the next item on the agenda is.
Who wants to do unit 50 negotiations?
I think we, I drew the short straw.
So you have, you have two, right? So one is, is the unit 50 negotiations.
Correct.
One is the title, teachers trying to, leaving unit 50 and negotiating.
Yep. Yep. So I volunteer to do the unit 50 negotiations. I don't think we had come to a decision on the title teachers, but I can also volunteer. I hope my husband's not watching. Unless anybody else would like to do that with it. I don't know if we need to for that. I know with unit 50, we've usually done one person. Actually, we might have done two, David. It might have been you, but I think you, or one of you couldn't make it most of the times.
I think we had, I think we had two in the late trade-off.
I think we had two, but I think it ended up being one most of the time. Because I definitely did it in the last one. If anybody would like to join me, that would be lovely.
It's not wise for Kate or I because of the election cycle.
Correct. So it would need to be one of the other three of us, which I already volunteered, so.
Do you need, do you have done two?
That's probably.
We had, I think we had assigned two in the last cycle, but.
To make sure that there's one person there when we actually have the meetings, it would be helpful.
Yeah, just in case. I am traveling a whole lot less coming up, but Justin, yeah, it's really nice actually. Except for next week, which I'll be gone like six days, but. Would either Teresa or David like to join?
I have a whole lot on my plate right now.
David be my backup?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Will you also join me on the title teachers?
What happened to that?
I'll bring you candy.
I'll bring you candy.
Well, just, will you get us a list of the, the next time we're going through all of these negotiations? I think I will be gone at that point.
I am happy to take lead on it and then if.
Yeah.
Does that sound okay?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Perfect. Then it will be me. And David.
Thank you.
All right. Do we need, what, actually, so that's a good, so we need to get back to unit 50 with that information, but then I don't know exactly what the next step is with the title teachers.
Well, I think we have to respond and say that we're ready to negotiate. There was a letter that was sent.
Yeah.
To us about opening negotiations and somehow I think we have to formally respond to that letter saying we are open to negotiating and the question is the when.
Yep.
Would you like to start with that?
Okay.
We can start in February, early February, something along those lines. And we'll write that back and then we'll sit down.
Okay. Perfect. I'm a negotiating fool this year. All right. So that brings us to our final agenda item, consent agenda. We have a whole slew of donations that are listed in your packet. I don't, do we want to read them all out?
I can just, what I will do is I'll read the folks that are providing donations and then if you entertain a vote for the consent agenda, that would be great.
Formal recognition is fabulous.
So obviously we have some donations from the Women's Community Committee for donations to Prescott, Cleveland, Oldham, Balch, the lead program and the high school, the Elks for 65 dictionaries for Oldham, the Prescott After School PTO enrichment program, and finally, the Moderna textile rebate donation.
Any discussion on any of those or motions to approve?
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept from David. Do I have a second? Seconded by Joan. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes five to zero. Opposed?
Not opposed, but I think one's not in alignment with our policies. The PTO enrichment program. Were those services already completed?
I think they might have.
We're supposed to accept a donation before. So I won't oppose it, but I will request that we look at our donation policies and there was some work with PTOs that have started and stopped a couple of times, so maybe we can get it.
Yeah, I think we need to. The only thing that was really clarified was capital projects because the.
Yeah.
We think that really.
We need to restart that discussion to.
So I would, accept it. I am grateful for it, but just if we could circle back to those policies sometime soon.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that's a good, that's a good catch that, you know, we definitely were more clear with the capital stuff and then we said we would come back with the, the other.
Because the cycles are completely off.
Yep.
Like when they have to pay for that stuff, it's super complicated.
All right. That brings us to school committee addenda. Teresa, do you have anything this evening?
Just an invitation to the community to please engage in our budget process that we now have started to talk about the last two meetings. A lot happens between now and May and although we will have our budget hearing at the end of March, the invitation to provide feedback is throughout the whole cycle, directly to Mr. Luff, directly to the school committee, by coming and speaking to us, by following along. We will be meeting as budget subcommittee pretty much every other week. We will have meetings with budget, budget balancing committee, as we mentioned, talking about budget every single meeting here until the end of April. Also encouraging people to watch the finance commission meetings because there's a whole dialogue around budget that happens there and they meet tomorrow night. And also watch the budget conversation unfold at board of select meetings as well. And then also this time of year is typically when we start to talk as a, as a school committee around legislative advocacy. So maybe we could put that on one of our next two agendas. And again, asking the community to let us know what it is that you want us to advocate for, but if we could talk about that topic next time, that would be great. Thank you.
Great. Kate? Yeah, just a couple of things. I wanted to piggyback on that and just echo Teresa's sentiments and say too, that though we appreciate the coverage in the Norwood record, making assumptions about the budget based on the articles that you see there is going to be tricky because it often, you get, we cover a lot in these meetings and our budget office goes to great lengths to prepare very detailed reports. And so you're going to be lacking context, you're going to be lacking timelines and really full pictures of the budget if that is your one source. So that's just an additional encouragement for the community. I did make some notes here. I'm going to read from this paper because it's late and I do tend to be a rambler, so forgive me for reading. It is that time of year to pull papers to run for office in Norwood and I want to share that I will not be running for a second term on the school committee at this time. I want to take a quick moment to thank the community, the administrators and staff who who I've been fortunate enough to collaborate with, and who have all taught me a great deal about the complexity of running a successful public school district. Each of us here, in addition to NPS faculty, understand that a healthy and thriving school system is foundational for a healthy and thriving community and requires an investment of resources, including funding, time, and dedication. So even when we haven't always agreed, I appreciate your commitment, and I thank you all. Now, please forgive me for this momentary soapbox moment, but it's a fact that we all, we are living in a time where hot takes and misinformation are rampant, where lack of context and journalism plagues citizen understanding, where government is often scorned and under the microscope except when it benefits, when its benefits are realized. Sadly, this serves not only as a vehicle for cynicism, but a disincentive to potential and much-needed public servants. Despite this, in my experience, Norwood is an involved and caring town. My sincere hope is that Norwood will continue to be a place where people do contribute their time and energy to the greater good, where we take time to understand each other and the complexities of our community happenings. Whether you run for office, serve on a town committee, help run PTO events, or just engage in a conversation with your neighbor, thank you for your contribution. I hope we as a town keep working with each other and for each other. I will continue to participate in town meeting and look forward to supporting Norwood Public Schools as a parent and resident.
Thank you. Joan?
So it is my seat, or I guess my term, it's not my seat, my term is also ending. This was the end of my second term. I started in about nine months before COVID hit, so I've, and then served through COVID, and then now have served through an outgoing superintendent and incoming superintendent. And I have picked up papers for a third term because it sounds like fun to try to be on the school committee while the Department of Education is dismantled. And that has nothing to do with your politics, actually. It just means it's uncertainty, right? Because the Department of Education provides a lot of the laws and regulations, as well as it provides kind of like guidelines for how funding comes through, and so sure, why not serve again during a time of massive uncertainty? All joking aside, I relish problem solving. As my colleagues know, I really enjoy jumping in and solving problems, and so I do feel like my experience on the school committee will continue to serve if I'm reelected for a third term. So if you see me, you'll be seeing me carrying around my papers. When you sign people's papers, just a public service announcement, just to put them on the ballot, doesn't mean you have to vote for them, it's just so they can get on the ballot. And so if you're a resident of Norwood and you see folks who are carrying their papers around, please be sure to sign, even if you're not going to vote for them, because at least it means that they can get on the ballot. If you are interested in making a real difference, all politics are truly local, and so regardless of how you feel about what's going on at the national or the state level, what I know of Norwood is that Norwegians, are we Norwegians?
I say it.
Yes. Norwegites? Folks from, folks from Norwood, people who live in Norwood, even those of us who have moved here and haven't lived here our whole lives, are incredibly proud to be of Norwood, to be from Norwood, and care about Norwood, and so it is, people ask me to describe Norwood all the time, and frequently what I say is, you know the really cold spot on the weather map, the spot that's always the bullseye? That's where Norwood is.
It was the warmest last night.
But the same, we're always the extreme, right? We're always either the warmest or the coldest. But what I say is, I say we're a purple town, right? And we are, because we have folks who sit very much on both sides of the spectrum. But I've been amazed in my time in Norwood, especially my time on school committee, at how both of those sides can be vehemently kind of opposed politically on the national level and come together to do things like get a middle school built, or to pass an override to take care of our kids, because people know that taking care of the town is the most important thing regardless of your national politics. So it's a long-winded and less eloquent way of saying that I have pulled papers, and also if anyone is interested in talking about the experiences of school committee or the experiences of local government, please feel free to contact me. I'm happy to sit down and have coffee and talk about what it's really like behind the scenes, the sexy backstory of running for town government, and now I'm really done.
Thank you. David?
I have nothing.
Sorry, I was deflating, no. I'll be very quick because I know my colleagues want to get the heck out of here. I just want to say, you know, this is our first meeting back after the holidays. Welcome back, everybody, back into the swing of things. I did want to just mention that, you know, we've talked a couple of times about having our, the safety committee that we have with the teachers and the administration. I represent the school committee on that, and I did have the opportunity to hear one request from one of the members of that committee at our last meeting, and I just want to pass that on to my colleagues to, you know, get into the schools. And I, you know, have not done that in a while myself, and I was kind of a little bit ashamed, and this particular person was in a school that one of my children was in, but it has been a great many years, and I'm sure it has changed quite a bit. And the request was not to just come and do a tour when, you know, you're just kind of walking around. It was volunteer for a lunch, stay for an hour and kind of be a little more candid, you know, observe a classroom, you know, for an hour, and just kind of hang out. And so there was just a little, a request, and, you know, I can even say to my colleagues who are in schools every day, you know, not these schools, you know, so I think even if you're a parent and you have your kids at one particular school, pick a different one. You know, so I actually had made myself a couple of notes, and then honestly, Ms. Simino said something today about touring, you know, the special education departments, and it just kind of like struck at me that I have not done that in quite a while, and obviously I'm in this, you know, this building, and I speak to lots of teachers, and I speak to administrators, but I don't want to be that disconnected. So that was the request, and I encourage my colleagues here on the board to think about that and see if you have an hour and a day to kind of pop into a school that you don't normally go to and just kind of hang out. Obviously, contact their principal first, don't just show up.
Follow the protocol.
Follow the protocol, clear it with Mr. Luff, inform the principal.
Try not to show up in some classroom that one of your kid's friends is in, and they're just going to be laughing the whole time and Snapchatting them that you're there or something like that, so. But that was my plea. I did, I did promise that I would pass that on to you all, so. Okay, so that brings us to the point in the night where we get to adjourn.
Just said, Priscilla has left school committee goals.
Oh.
You have those, and there's also your ground rules.
Do I have signature pages in here? Don't leave before you sign stuff.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, and, second. Joan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We are back here on Wednesday, January, oh my good God, what is?
Twenty ninth.
Fourteen days from now.
Twenty eighth.
Twenty ninth, thank you, at 7:00 PM, and thank you very much for joining us and hope to see you then.